To the Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing. It is Wednesday, August 28, 2024. And if I could have the roll call, madam?
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Baxter. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Very good. Let the record reflect that Commissioners Weiss, Moreno, and who else is missing there?
Baxter.
Baxter, and Baxter, thank you, Commissioner Baxter, are going to be present today by through technology, and if I could have a finding of extenuating circumstances to allow it.
So move, Madam Mayor.
All those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously, so that due to extenuating circumstances, they will be present at this meeting, and they will be allowed to vote.
A mayor.
So, yes, Madam Clerk.
I had the second on that vote.
Yes, we had a first by Commissioner Barnett and a second by Commissioner Woodward. So with that in mind, everybody is present by phone. We're going to proceed. If I could have Commissioner Barnett, Bernard do the prayer and as well as the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise if you're able to. Father, guide us in the duties we are about to perform. Give us wisdom to make the best decisions for all your citizens. Help us to remember that no problem is too small to escape concern, and perplexity too great to resist solution. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the releasing of justice,
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. If I could have proof of publication?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Very good. And a motion to receive and file.
So move.
Second. All those four, anybody opposed? You didn't see that, did you? I will announce it. We have a first by Commissioner Barnett, a second by Commissioner Woodward, all those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously, seven to zero. We're going to move on to agenda, but before we do, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Bernard for a special proclamation.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for giving me the opportunity to present this certificate of congratulations. Would Glendia Harvey please come forward? And also would some of her coworkers from the Clerk's office Clerk Abruzzo is not able to make it, but I had the chance to speak to him last week, and he sends his congratulations to you on behalf of the clerk. If you've been a county commissioner here, or if you've been a mayor of the county, you get a chance to go to the second floor and sign a lot of paperwork. And when you get a chance to sign all those paperwork, you always end up having to speak with Glendia Harvey. And so that's when I got a chance to know Glendia, and today I get the chance to recognize her, and we're going to present this certificate to her, which states that I would like to express my best wishes, sincere thanks, and gratitude for your more than 22 years of dedicated service, your wisdom, and commitment to excellence as a full-service specialist to have long inspired all and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. And this is dated today, August 28, 2024. You know, as you retire, I was thinking this morning of this song, and we cannot play it, but, you know, having talked to you and through everything that you've gone through, I thought about if you're going to retire, you know, I was thinking of C.C. Wine and song, "Goodness of God." And, you know, it states that, "I love you, Lord, for your mercy never fails me. All my days I've been held in your hands, from the moment that I wake up until I lay my head, oh, I will sing of the goodness of God." Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Thank everyone. Thank everybody that got a request, everybody that didn't get a request. I appreciate your love. Thank you. God bless you, and amen.
to say that was one of the most moving proclamations that we've ever done, and I appreciate you. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to agenda review. Are there any additions, deletions, substitutions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we do have an add delete, which is a letter from the Alliance of Delray.
Yes.
And it's for item 4C2, the general discussion for civic sites, and it's really supporting, maintaining a case-by-case basis approach to the civic sites.
Very good. Thank you so much. And then we could have a motion to receive and file the agenda as amended. I have a first by Commissioner Bernard, a second by Commissioner Woodward, all those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously, seven to zero. There any postponements on the agenda? None. I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda as with the addition to it. I have a first by Commissioner Bernard, a second by Commissioner Woodward, those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes seven to zero unanimously. Now, if you look at page two, we have a public hearing amendment round 24-b adoption, and that appears on page two. With the public hearing, do we need to have, thank you for that, do we need to have any presentation, Mr. Rutter?
That'd be at the board's discretion. You're starting with item 3A1, and these are our adoption items, and staff's available for presentation if you'd like one.
All right, let's take the 3A1, the Port of Palm Beach Master Plan Update.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve item 3A. Do we?
Comment cards on it.
Okay, we do, okay.
Just for the record, we will have Commissioner Woodward do the cards, and of course, Commissioner Barnett will do the time. So we do have cards, Commissioner?
Mr. Gerald Ward.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm Gerald Ward, 2135 Broadway in the great city of Riviera Beach. I a professional licensed engineer since 1971, and worked for the port, in the port, since December of 1965. That's when the completion was of the deepening project to the current 30-some-five-feet, 33-feet project depths, working then for the feds in the U.S. Coast Engineering Survey. I here to suggest you go ahead and approve, as the motion had been made by Commissioner Bernard. At the same time, the port has not exactly looked to planning as its attributes. So from there, I would suggest you look at the second page of my handout, which is four requests, and that they be put in the record, and you do have the option under the process today to actually direct or modify, add in, as you might see fit, the four items. The first is to implement the federal appropriation that occurred some years back, 2014, which is still in effect for $25 million worth of navigational aid safety improvements. Remember, when I came in 1965, they had just put in the new aids to navigation, and the Coast Guard needs to replace them, and the port has yet to take advantage of that. The second item is NOAA established a ports process back in the '90s, and three ports of Florida have it, but this port, which has the Florida Current, the Gulf Stream, across the entrance, sometimes a half knot, sometimes even more, doing the port system would be an excellent environmental enhancement for the port. Thirdly, during the long-delayed process, this action today is two years late, the master plan update had the port towing, the, that's the tug assistance people, Captain Algar is here in the audience with me, who was one of the authors of the recommendations for safety improvements. And lastly, the electrification and modernization of the container operation would be good for the environment. So I would suggest you go ahead and approve it. I have a fifth recommendation, that you have staff consider whether you should take over. You took over South Lake Worth Inlet, an identical port in the mid-'90s, and it may very well be. There's only one other port that's not operated by the local municipality or the local county in the state of Florida, the 15-deep water port. So that's all recorded there and submitted for the record. Thank you.
Before you leave the podium, sir, first, thank you for your years of service. Your experience is helpful to us in this issue. Are you recommending that this, that your three-page letter of recommendations be part of the record, but that also that staff review it and possibly come back with a review and a report on these recommendations, sir?
Yes, because we have two major inlets in Lake Worth, and this one became the deep-water port. The South Lake Worth was taken over by you in the mid-'90s and is a recreational and flushing inlet. Both inlets serve a good environmental purpose plus commerce, and so I think staff should take a look at coming back with recommendations as to whether some of these things might be good for enhancing our public perception and our environment of Lake Worth and Palm Beach County.
I appreciate these recommendations. I think they're well-placed. Mr. Rutter, is this something that we can review or at least move forward on the recommendation today for the update, but have staff review and report back to us?
So the action the board would be taking today is to adopt by reference the port's master plan. It's not a document that we create. We do it by reference. We can continue to communicate and work with the port on it, but I can't emphasize enough that the facts, the information, all of that, and here Mr. Ward's words and saw his letter, it's generated by the port, but we will definitely, we can take this board's words, hear this as well, and continue to communicate with the port. It's not something that we of ourselves would initiate, though.
What I would like to do then, and I'm going to recognize Commissioner Bernard in a minute, is to have your recommendations, sir, made part of the record.
Yes, ma'am, please.
And that the staff review it, because I think these are well-placed. I have a little bit of knowledge from my previous legislative career on the Port of Palm Beach, and give a report back. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My motion, which is to adopt the ordinance, however, you know, we'll accept the recommendation, but that would be up to Mr. Ward to work with the port and their master plan, and if the port and Mr. Ward agrees, then they can bring something back to us. But my motion does not include incorporating his comments.
Well, my motion does. I would like to see this, his recommendations made a part of the record. We all have a copy of it, and I would like to see the, I'm sure I know the folks at the port, I'm sure they would welcome a review of some of these recommendations, and to have, and I agree, to have the port as well as Mr. Ward work together, but to have our staff review this as well, and then to come back at a certain point when it's appropriate and give us a report on it. I think we agree. I just want to make sure it's part of the record. Mr. Attorney?
Well, we don't have a second on a motion yet, so we can't have a substitute motion at the moment, so.
Okay. Would there be any legal issue as to not making part of this of the record?
I mean, it is part of the record. It's been submitted. It already is part of the record.
Okay, good. So I think, though, what we have is an agreement between Commissioner Bernard and myself, that, of course, legally, it's already part of the record. But the second thing is that the port and, of course, our staff will review these recommendations and report back to the Board of County Commissioners. So I'm going to give that the first to Commissioner Bernard, and I'll second it.
No, Madam Mayor, you're, so, yeah, so I would make the motion, but you're, as a chair, you cannot second it. But I just, my issue is just that I just don't think that, you know, staff should work on this. This should be an issue between Mr. Ward and the Port of Palm Beach in terms of what are the changes they would like to, for us to address, but.
Go ahead.
I will be glad to work on it. At the same time, it needs other advices, and in the mid-'90s, you decided to take over a similar, identically chartered district in the South County. And I would tell you that there were 60 people here today, and if you look at and go to the May meeting after the transmittal hearing of 1 May, the manager said, well, we put it on, we've got it approved, we put it on the shelf. Comprehensive planning, as you announced as the first words, is very important in Florida, and it should not be put on the shelf, and that's one of the objections I have.
Well, sir, I think that you're, as I stated before, for the record, these are well-placed recommendations. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, just a question for staff. What is our role as the Board of County Commissioners in, with the port? Can anyone?
So the port is a separate entity, right? So they are, like Patrick said, they are adopting their, we are taking their master plan and incorporating it into our comprehensive plan. If he has any complaints with the master plan, then that's something that needs to be taken up with the port. Staff is recommending approval of the master plan. It meets all of the requirements necessary, and so that any issues with it should be brought to the port, not to the county.
So this board doesn't have any?
Well, we have authority. I mean, you can say no today, right? You can vote, you have your legislative authority, but the county staff doesn't have the, correct me if I'm wrong, capability to make decisions for the port. We don't have the expertise, nor do we have probably the legal authority to do so, because the port is itself its own district.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So the master plan for the Port of Palm Beach was adopted in September of 2023, so there was a public hearing process involved with that adoption and any changes to the plan at that time. I believe that Mr. Ward's documentation references that public hearing process as well. So I think that comments were provided to the port and interested parties, so there was that conversation as the master plan was amended. So the county's comprehensive plan by reference has really adopted the port's master plan, and that's required per Florida statute. So this is, I don't want to call it housekeeping, but more or less, we're referring to the previously adopted port master plan within our comprehensive plan, and we need to make sure that our comprehensive plan is consistent with all of the current references in the port's master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I see Commissioner Barnett and Mr. Rutter.
I just want to go ahead and second Commissioner. I'm just going to go ahead and second Commissioner Bernard's motion.
Okay. Mr. Rutter?
I was just going to add one point. Jeff stole my one line about it's a statutory requirement for us to do it by reference, and if I understand the motion correctly, we will communicate to the port the board's interest in this point, sharing Mr. Ward's letter.
Exactly, yes.
And communicate that point, and the port will work with that as they see fit.
I appreciate that, because the county should be part of this discussion. Absolutely. Every port in this state has a very strong county involvement, and to deny in any way, shape, or form county involvement in a discussion of the Port of Palm Beach denies the public an involvement in the discussion on the Port of Palm Beach. So I will accede to the, or concede to, the motion and the second, but however, I invite our staff to be actively involved in this discussion between the port and Mr. Ward, because it can only go to the benefit of the people of this county, and we should never be denied this discussion. So again, thank you very much for your service and for your continued involvement in this, and I just know that the, that our county will continue to be involved in the discussions on the comprehensive plan for the port. With that, we're going to take a vote, all those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. I appreciate it. Okay.
Was that the last card, or were there, okay.
So good to have you here, Mr. Attorney. Good. Okay, moving right along to 4A, County Propose Tech's Initiation. We're going to look at Westgate Belvedere Homes CRA Bonus Density Pool Initiation. And should we have a staff report?
We do, from the Westgate CRA, but I can just do a quick intro to this. Again, this is a request from the Westgate CRA, our redevelopment arm in the county. In 2005, the board granted the CRA 1,300 bonus units. They are depleting those units right now. There's only about 934 units remaining. They do have a life cycle of another 20 years. Elise Michelle, the executive director, is here requesting an additional 3,000 units to accommodate the demand for housing at this point currently, and also to help with future planning and redevelopment efforts and initiative in the future for the next 20 years. So with that, I'll turn it over to Elise Michelle.
Very good. Good morning, sir.
Yes, good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners and staff. We have a full presentation for you. I can summarize and get you out of here quickly, or if you want a full presentation, we can also do that. We give you a good introduction of what we're trying to do. You gave us 1,300 units in 2005 for our density bonus pool. We've spent some of them. We have a major project in the works. That's going to take some more units from that pool, so that's why we're asking for more units. We're asking for 3,000 for the current developments and also for the future. As we mentioned, the CRA may be around for another 20 years, so we're going to need more units in the future. So that's why we are requesting 3,000 more units to add to the current pool. We have justification for you, if you wish. I have a Dennis panel.
Does anybody wish to see any further presentation by staff? And we do have how many cards?
One card.
Okay, we have one card. Okay, just seen no interest in seeing the further presentation. Does anybody have any questions or comments for staff at this time? Okay, sir?
I can't hear you, sir.
Vice Mayor wants.
Oh, obviously. Okay, go right ahead. I can hear you now, Commissioner.
Okay, question. Does the CRA need infrastructure to allow these?
Yes, the, we have water, we have sewer, we have roadways improvement already in place. The 3,000 we are requesting, we're not going to build them all at once. It's a projection for the next 20 years. The project, we need them more for, is going to be on Congress Avenue, and everything is in place on Congress Avenue for those units that are being proposed.
Thank you.
Do you have any other further questions, Commissioner Moreno?
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Sir, I have a question as a result of Commissioner Moreno's probe on that. This is a 20-year build-out, isn't it, sir?
Yes.
And you said there's water and sewage, but how about roads?
Yes, we did a traffic study back in 2005, and then a lot of trips were associated to projects in the corridor, and it worked back then. As, this is just an initiation, we're going to do another traffic study to see what kind of impact those projects are going to have on Okeechobee Boulevard, Congress Avenue, Westgate Avenue, and Belvedere. But in terms of roadways, yes, all the roadways are built up. I know that the county would like to widen Congress Avenue in the future, so at some point, we're going to address those issues also, not just reconstructing Congress Avenue, but also do more public transportation projects to allow traffic to flow much better than they are today. Again, it's a long-term plan. We're going to take it one thing at a time.
So that the last traffic study was 2005?
Yes.
And so a part of this plan is to do a traffic study on Congress and Okeechobee, and you will also include in that a traffic study with regard to public transportation?
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions? Commissioner Woodward?
Yes, thank you. Just following up on this, you said it's a 20-year plan. Is there phasing as part of this, or it's this many units over 20 years? What if it builds out quicker?
Yes, I think there is language in the comprehensive plans. If we deplete all the pool, we have to come back before the BCC for more units, and then do new studies for housing demand, transportation, and traffic trips before the BCC can approve. So if we use all the units you give us through this process, we have to come back before the BCC for more units.
But just to be clear, so these units, you could build them out in five years, not 20, right?
It is possible if there is enough development, enough requests to use those units, but the CRA is not going to be approving those units by itself. You are going to see some of those. You are going to see, uh, some of those requests. So, you can make the determination based on traffic, based on housing demand, whether you want to approve those units within five years. If you want to extend them, extend them to 15 or 20 years, the BCC will have, uh, the opportunity to make those decisions as we move along. It's, it's not all going to be given by rights. If you need a lot of units, they're all going to make their requests to, to you at some points.
If I may, um.
Yes, go right ahead.
So, the Westgate CRA board does not have final approving authority. It still lies with the county. So, site plan approval, any conditional uses, any kind of development review process will still go through the zoning division. And they're just facilitating some of the other infrastructure needs outside of the parcels that are coming in. So, yes, you will have final approving authority.
It'll come back to us. Okay. So, we're going to increase it from 934 to, up to 3,000. And, and this will all come back to us for approval. Once this begins, the phases begin with the traffic, uh, as well as public transportation.
Yes, so the clarification, it's, uh, 1,300 units, so we're increasing an additional 3,000. And this is for initiation only. So, the board is looking at a motion to initiate.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Very good. We have one card. Sir.
Alex Holiday.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Alex Holiday. I live at 385 Lidle Street in West Palm Beach. I'm a teammate at Frisbee Group, and I'm here today on behalf of our firm and our partners, Terra Group. As many of you know, um, our partnership is under contract to purchase the property at 1111 North Congress, which is in the Westgate CRA and is currently home to the Palm Beach Kennel Club. I'm here today to offer our partnership's full support of the Westgate CRA's proposal to add units to their density bonus pool. I think it's evident that we are in the midst of an exciting time of growth in Palm Beach County. And with that will come a continued need for quality, sustainable, and desirable housing for both our current and future residents. We believe the Westgate CRA is the natural place for future housing, given its proximity to our county's major travel arteries, the airport, and to downtown West Palm Beach. With this in mind, we believe the proposal to add units to the density bonus pool is exactly the type of forward-thinking initiative necessary to thoughtfully manage and foster the continued growth of the area. I would also like to add that throughout our process, we've had the pleasure of working with, closely with Denise, Denise, Elise, and others at the Westgate CRA. We continue to be impressed with their professionalism, their passion for the community, and their forward-thinking, uh, problem-solving approach. We're excited to continue working with them, and we're excited to contribute to the growth and the revitalization of the Westgate CRA. With all this in mind, I would again offer our full support for this initiative and respectfully request that you all vote in favor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. All right.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Do we have any other cards?
No.
No other cards. Okay. Very good. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to initiate the Westgate Density Pool Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, and also to initiate the Associated Unified Land Development Code Amendments.
Mr. Attorney, can we do this in one vote, or do we need two separate ones?
Two is, uh, the one is fine.
Okay, very good. Excellent. So, we have, uh, a, um, motion by Commissioner Bernard.
Second.
For 4A1, for motion one. And motion two, we have a second by Commissioner Woodward. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you very much. And moving on now to 4B1, Seventh at Haverhill Text Initiation. By the way, do we have any cards on this one?
We have four cards.
Four cards. Okay, very good. Uh, and we're ready for, uh, staff, staff report?
Yes, the, usually the board would entertain the applicant's presentation, but yes, this is a privately proposed text initiation to the comprehensive plan.
And we have, uh, an applicant here. Good morning.
Good morning.
You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioners, my name is Meredith Lay. I'm with Hudson Bowen, 525 Okeechobee Boulevard. Here to present to you the text initiation for the comprehensive plan for Seventh at Haverhill. Uh, just to familiarize yourself with the project that kind of spurred this amendment, it is located at 1473 North Haverhill Road. It's about a half mile south of Okeechobee Boulevard. And although it's hard to see on this map, on the screens, what I wanted to show on this is the infrastructure that surrounds it. It is located on North Haverhill Road, halfway between Belvedere and Okeechobee. It's about a mile away from the airport, less than a mile away from grocery stores. There's bus routes, uh, along the frontage that connect to multiple bus routes north and south of it. It has easy access to the Florida's Turnpike. Um, there's a fire department nearby. It's a really well-situated project for the type of infill that we are attempting to, um, provide. The, um, project is, has a future land use designation currently of high residential, eight units per acre, and a zoning res-, uh, designation of, uh, multifamily, high-density residential, which would be RH, which equates to, um, RM, current, in the current code. And it is in the revitalization and redevelopment infill overlay, the RRIO and, um, CCRT. And the RRIO is the significant part, part of this amendment. It means it's a target area for redevelopment. This map just shows the existing future land use designations for this, the subject site, as well as those that surround it. As you can see, it's surrounded on the east and west by a HR12s. It's the highest, highest density that the comprehensive plan currently allows by right, unless it was grandfathered in as HR18. And, um, to the south is HR8, and north is MR5. So, it's got a diversity of, uh, density ranges abutting it. The town of Haverhill is just to the south. And I'm sorry, I'll go back to the slide really quick. Just the existing context, there is a, uh, commercial low office to the, just to the north. But then the, most of the properties around it are, uh, multifamily and, uh, park and daycare. So, it's kind of institutional neighborhood, um, context. The existing use on the site is a place of worship. So, the request is to revise the future land use element policy, 2.4G, to allow, uh, seven, uh, up to seven TDRs for projects that are in the RRIO, and that they provide, that they will provide 100% of the units affordable in accordance with the affordable housing policy. And what that means is that it would be affordable to, affordable units to those whose AMIs are less than 60% of the, of the area median income, but not more than 20% of the units can be less than 30% of the AMI. So, it'll provide kind of a diverse range of units, but in the affordable housing range. If it's initiated, then the request, uh, then we will request in November, in the next round, a future land use amendment to allow, to change the future land use to institutional with an underlying high-residential 12 units an acre. And what that does would allow us to rezone the property to, uh, MUPD. And there are reasons behind. There's a, a method to the madness of choosing, selecting that. And there's a lot, there was a lot of background into trying to get to the point where we are today with these, um, tentative decisions. We will continue to work with zoning staff on the, uh, final program and the final zoning designation. But the goal is to get to 102 multifamily units with a 4,500 square foot place of worship. So, the purpose for the amendment is multifold. The, um, in today's environment, faith-based organizations are facing an affordability crisis or affordability challenges of their own. And this is not just happening here in South Florida, but it's happening all across the country. So, we're faced with both the housing crisis, affordable housing crisis, and affordability for these faith-based nonprofit organizations as well. They're facing issues with, um, having a large surplus of land, but increased maintenance costs, increased, uh, responsibilities for, um, the la-, uh, maintenance and, um, utilities, insurance, operational costs. Uh, so there's, these challenges make it, are increasingly more appealing to partner with somebody who could help, uh, kind of fill those financial gaps. So, what we're finding is that in partnering with a developer, they can help meet the community need for both affordable housing and, um, sustain that organization into the future. It also helps, like I mentioned, with our own affordable housing crisis. Not many developers, uh, who come to our area want to do affordable housing. So, this would be kind of new or, um, rare in today's development, uh, environment, where most developments, if they're coming in, they're doing workforce housing, this would be affordable housing. And the affordable housing often requires higher densities in order to be financially feasible because they utilize non-traditional financing mechanisms. And in order to do that, and, and the benefit of being able to do that is it makes the, the development affordable to construct, but it also passes those savings down to the residents who are able to continue to afford to, for future residents. I've done a lot of studying about how, uh, how widespread this phenomenon is. There are a lot of growing partnerships happening all across this country, uh, California, Georgia, Washington State, DC, Virginia, Maryland. And what is happening is that a lot of these municipalities don't already have the policies in place to accommodate these new development, these new types of developments. So, many municipalities and, and counties have to kind of modify their existing either maps or policies in order to let these developments happen. In South Florida, I found that there is multiple examples, um, both vertically and horizontally integrated. Down in Miami, there are several, uh, 609 Brickell and the first, uh, Miami Presbyterian Society of Biscayne, which is a very high-rise development where the church is on the first, first two or three floors. And then there's like 40 floors above it, but we're not trying to do that. Nothing nearly as intense, but it's happening down there as well as, uh, and in West Palm Beach, we have Peace Village, which you recently heard was the horizontally, the Elks Club, um, Family Church, and, uh, Temple Israel. And there's a lot more. I just didn't want to fill this slide up with a bunch of things that wouldn't mean as much to you as they do to me because I've been studying it for a long time. So, this is what the policy would look like in writing and, and insert it into the code into 2.4G. And it would basically just be inserting point number five in the exact text that you read. In the revitalization and redevelopment overlay, up to seven dwelling units an acre, additional for developments with 100% of the units restricted in accordance with the affordable housing program. We worked with, um, planning staff to craft this language. Currently, what's allowed in the RRIO is four dwelling units an acre. All this does is allow us an additional three units an acre in the RRIO because it's affordable housing. So, staff recommends to initiate the proposed text amendment. And we are thankful for their cooperation and working with us to get to this point. But we do have a long way to go from this point. If it is initiated, then we will see you back again, perhaps in May 2025, for the, um, uh, next step.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments to the applicant?
Madam Mayor, Mer-, Meredith, you look familiar. Okay, I'm.
Yeah, I used to sit, I used to sit down over there.
I was like, thanks.
I have to say it was a very comprehensive. Uh, but, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, okay, very good. Okay. Maybe we'll keep you right there for now.
Okay.
Okay, go right ahead. Vice Mayor Moreno, you're recognized.
I do have a hand raised.
You have a hand raised.
This is funny because I'm talking and it's echoing, so it sounds so weird.
It's okay. We can hear you fine. Don't worry.
Here's my question. How does this get subdivided so that the units that are now designated affordable housing actually become taxable units? But the place of worship still stays a nonprofit and not taxable?
That is not, that is, because it would be vertically integrated, there would be something that we would need to work out with the, um, property appraiser, where it would be just the portion of the place of worship within the building that would be, um, uh, tax exempt. But the rest of the property would likely be, uh, taxed as normal, as for multifamily.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, any other questions or comments to the applicant? I have, uh, a couple. One of the biggest issues between having places of worship and private entities in a public-private partnership is, of course, taxes. So, when you come back, if you could let us know how the taxes are going to be distributed. I think that was, uh, really the crux of what Vice Mayor was requesting. I know it's been done in a number of other places. So, there's got to be a formula for, uh, being able to handle the tax situation between the religious organization and the private entity. Uh, second question, and you can bring this back, this is for your record, uh, is in your research, could you let us know who's going to run the, there's going to be issues with the, uh, affordable housing. They may have many homeless folks there, uh, who will need social services. And, uh, who will be running that program of social services to support the population in the affordable housing units? Will that be the church, or will that be county social services? Uh, if you could let us know in this particular project.
Okay.
Okay? And then, um, I know you touched upon it, but I'd like to know specifically with regard to, uh, affordable housing units that may have families, uh, with regard to schools, busing, uh, is there a transit corridor there? And other services. You touched upon it lightly. And when you come back, if you could be a little more specific in terms of folks being able to get to, uh, along that transit corridor for public transportation, uh, as well as, um, for other needs to support that, uh, that public housing. And that would be fine. Um, i- if we have no other, uh, questions, then I'm going to ask, uh, Commissioner, uh, Woodward to go ahead and read us the cards. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have four cards. Jasmine Lynch, Garfield Miller, Glenn Andrews, and Laura Robinson.
As you hear your name, we have two podiums. Could have two on one side and two on the other. But if you could come forward so I know that you're here and present. Two on one side and two on the other. Ma'am, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jasmine Lynch. I'm the president for the Board of Trustees for, for, for Palm Beach, for West Palm Beach Baptist Seventh Day Church. I'm also a retired educator. The West Palm Beach Baptist Seventh Day Church was launched January 4, 1992 in a rented facility at Crosswood Baptist Church at the corner of 45th Street and Haverhill Road, with the Miami Seventh Day Baptist Church as its sponsoring church. From the onset, the church had a passion to minister to the community and its members. One month after its inception, February 1992, it started a tutoring program for students with academic difficulties in reading English, math, science, and social studies, along with systematic training for effective parenting for the parents. The church recruited teachers from the community to supplement the educators at the church. The tutors went into the homes of the students to do the tutoring. This was a very successful program, but because of safety concerns for its tutors going into the homes of the students, the program was discontinued and the focus was on owning its own building and bringing the students there for tutoring and the parents for adult interest programs. In 2002, the church purchased 3.37 acres of land at 1473 North Haverhill Road with the intention of building a church and community center. Pratt and Whitney donated eight modular buildings to the church, and they were relocated to the property in 2004 to retrofit them into a church and community center. Before it was completed, an arsonist burnt the building down and shattered our dreams of meeting the community needs. We have been trying from then to rebuild, and now we have a developer who shares our vision. I urge the board to approve the amendment text put forth by the developer so that we can have a church and community center to serve our members and community.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you so much, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
Good.
All right, Laura Robinson, minister and a member of the West Palm Beach Baptist Seventh Day Church. All right, so our church became aware of the Palm Beach County not being able to get qualified teachers and nurses to work here because they could not find affordable housing. So in 2001, the church sent out an RFP to developers to develop the land with affordable housing and build our church to help with the housing crunch and fulfill our mission of reaching the needs of community and its members. A total of eight developers responded to our request, and all of them were interested, but when they looked at the Palm Beach County regulations on density and parking laws, they said it would not be profitable for them and decided not to pursue partnering with us. TBP Development Group shared our vision, and we decided to partner with them to build affordable rental units or church and community center. The community has exercised a lot of patience, sorry, the company has exercised a lot of patience, creativity, and endurance, and it is the church's desire that you will grant the text amendment for them to proceed with the development with which we have approved. I don't have to tell you all the need for affordable housing and the need to develop communities with moral principles, integrity, and religious living. Providing affordable housing makes our job easier to attract educators, nurses, post office workers, police officers, and as such reduce homelessness in Palm Beach County. We so urge you to approve the developer's text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Sir, good morning.
Good morning. Go ahead.
I'm just waiting for the...
Oh, good morning. My name is Garfield Miller, lead pastor of the West Palm Beach Baptist Seventh Day Church, and it is really my privilege to be here. It was a breath of fresh air to hear us starting with prayer, we are in the right place. Thank you for that. As a church, we have been engaged with the Haverhill community for over 30 years. The county recognized us with a proclamation for our 30th anniversary, and just this year, the Lewis Center acknowledged our work with homeless, with the homeless population with a certificate of recognition. We have members of our congregation who make the hard decision to move from this county to others because of affordable housing. We have seen the need up close. As a result of that, we are doing our part in this endeavor. When we acquired the property, we had a dream of erecting a building for worship and community center. While waiting, our dream evolved as we observe our community and begun to envision how we can serve our community to the fullest extent. We believe that using the property for low-income housing serves the community in many ways. For the engagement of the community, this project of approximately 100 affordable units and worship and community center is our investment in assisting low-income families to alleviate homelessness, thereby sharing the burden of our community. Our county, the county no less, we believe that it's our responsibility to do what we can to make your jobs easier. Our facility in this plan will greatly enrich our community with the programs we'll be able to pursue. One would be language studies, English in particular. We live in a diverse community with Spanish Creole and English persons. We are hoping as well to have ministries like a food pantry and after-school program. This will certainly help our community. We are confident that this initiative will go a far way in solving a few of the county's own problems and will also challenge other stakeholders to step up and join in the investment for this well-deserved purpose. I urge this board to approve the text amendment so that we may start to make a difference in the community that we love. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Miller, oh, Commissioner Barnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. This project, did you say, can you repeat, how many units are expected to be built?
Specifically, 102. I said approximately 100, but the exact number is 102.
Okay, and I heard it was mentioned that there would be religious programs or activities available for the residents.
Yes.
Would those be voluntary participation programs?
Yes. In our church, we have a number of teachers and other educators, as well as even counselors, and we are expecting to have volunteers, and if we realize that we need outside help, we certainly will engage as well.
And these units would be available to people of any faith?
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you. You've been serving the people in that community for 30 years.
Yes.
And I think you probably said "community." I didn't count the number of times, but it was a lot.
Yes.
I appreciate, what I'm looking forward to is communities with affordable workforce housing as part of that community rather than put out, isolated by themselves. And you've already established a community, and so I appreciate what you've done, but most importantly, I appreciate what the private developer is doing as well as the county in making sure that we have housing for those to join in that community. Thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you.
Sir, you are recognized.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Glenn Andrews. If I sound kind of trembly, I'm nervous, right?
I'm nervous, too.
But I try. My wife is a member of the church for the longest time, her family also, and that brought me into being a part of the church. Sorry. I always wonder, why is it that some of the members have to be relying on outside, you know, living, housing facilities, and so on? And it has complicated things in that traveling from here to there, you know, the distance is apart. That's one point. The other point I want to raise is that salary within the church, can you imagine, some of these members are working like $1,000, $500, $600 a month, and they have to pay $800, $900, $1,000 to just pay the bare essential for housing? That's almost crazy. I cannot do the maths, but you're much smarter than me, right? But another point I want to say is having children, right? You have two or three children, and you have to be providing for them, whether it is one of the housing, food, clothing, traveling, and all of that, right? When I heard of the project with the developers, I was elated. I was kind of skeptical first, but then I was elated after that because when I look at the problems, you know, it's like a blessing in disguise. So really, I don't want to go on much longer, but I wanted to say this, that I hope and pray that the persons who are in charge of the county are making decisions or so on would consider, maybe go further than where I went, to see, to okay, I'll give okay to this project. I want to thank you very much for giving me this privilege to talk to you. Thank you, all right?
Thank you so much, sir. Any questions or comments? All right, we have one other card. Go right ahead, Commissioner Woodward.
Bernique Ademola. Sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning. So my name is Bernique Ademola. I'm a member of the West Palm Beach Baptist Seventh Day Church. I moved in 2020 from Maryland to West Palm Beach to be close to my parents and siblings who reside here. After living with my parents for some time, it was time to venture on my own. I liked living in Palm Beach County, but I soon discovered that there was no way I would be able to afford a home in this county. I'm a registered nurse who worked at Good Samaritan Hospital. I was forced to purchase a home in St. Lucie County in 2023 away from my support system. As a single parent to a special needs child, that support is important. Having a career and working overtime did not help much. Think about those who were close to minimum wage. How do they survive? Rent is high, home prices are high, interest rates, taxes are all still on the increase. I am here to stand with West Palm Beach Baptist Seventh Day Church and the developers. The community surrounding the church will benefit from this project that will not only build the church and community center, but will also provide affordable housing to many. I implore you to please approve this text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. All right, we have completed all of the cards, and before I call in, Commissioner Bernard, I'm going to look at staff. Do we need to have a staff report at this time? Okay, see and none. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm going to make a motion to initiate the Seventh at Haverhill Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment. That's the first motion. The second is to initiate the Associate Unified Land Development Code amendments. And what I do want to weigh in a little bit, so if we can get a second?
Hold on just one second. We can do both at the same time, sir.
Yeah, I don't see any reason we can't do it.
Okay, very good. I have a first, and I have a second by Commissioner Barnett, right? So let's take the vote, and then would you like to speak now?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Go right ahead, Commissioner.
You know, so first of all, we do have Barbara Roth, who's, you know, president of Cobra, who's here, and she was the one who made the motion, you know, so thank you very much for your service, Barbara, and, you know, when it came in front of the, which board was it?
Planning.
Planning Commission, so. But, you know, the first person who spoke, you know, talked about the church started at Crossroad Baptist Church, and, you know, the late pastor, Wayne Paget, you know, he would be so happy and so proud of what you're doing today, and he would say back, you need to fix this time. But, you know, just...
Have additional time.
And he would be so proud of this church in terms of thinking outside the box, starting at Crossroad on 45th Street and Haverhill, and now, you know, now providing affordable housing in another community to provide 102 units. So this is really great outside-the-box thinking where a church is trying to create affordable housing, and I hope that our other churches with land that we can use that, those land to create more affordable and workforce housing for our residents. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Very good. Now with that, all those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you so much, and thank you for coming here. Thank you for that opportunity to build these houses. And thank you, young lady, for your presentation. All right, we're going to move right on to 4C1, Forest Oaks Community Development District. And this is going to be, staff recommendation has approval on this, and you're going to ask us to adopt an ordinance of the Forest Oaks Community Development District? Is there anybody here who, do we have any cards? No cards. Is there anybody here who, on behalf of the applicant, who wishes to speak? Sir, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jared Earlywine. I'm with QTAC Rock. If you remember, Henry Handler and I were here in February on the Reflection Bay...
Who is that?
Henry Handler.
Henry Handler?
Yes.
Henry Handler, okay, very good.
We were here back in February of this year on the Reflection Bay CDD petition. This particular petition is almost identical to that one. It's a golf course redevelopment project, about the same size, same amount of infrastructure, and it'll have all the same benefits that the Reflection Bay CDD has, the ability to access the tax finance market, obtain FEMA funding, collect on the tax roll, sovereign immunity protection, all those other benefits. As you all know, a CDD is basically just a more capable version of a homeowners association, and that's what we're proposing here today for the Forest Oaks community. So we're here and happy to answer any questions and appreciate your consideration.
Very good, sir. Any questions or comments by members of the board? All right, thank you, sir. Do we have a staff presentation or a recommendation on this? I know we have a recommendation, but anything from staff?
Jeff Gannon, our deputy director, is prepared to present if the board chooses.
Very good. Please.
Thank you, Twee. Good morning once again, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. So the item before the board is an ordinance to approve the Forest Oaks Community Development District. Before you on the PowerPoint is the site location, which is located within the Lucerne Lakes PUD, which is located south of Lake Worth Road, east of Florida's Turnpike, and west of Jog Road. The subject site, which is identified by the red border on the image to the right on the PowerPoint, is approximately 79 acres in area, and as Jared mentioned, in general, Community Development District is an independent unit of special purpose local government typically established for the purposes of planning, financing, constructing, operating, maintaining, and managing infrastructure and services required to support the development of a In summary, the estimated total costs are approximately $26 million. That would be bonded out by the Community Development District. That would equate to an annual assessment for future property owners, depending on the unit purchased, between $1,500 and $1,600 per year, and that would be for a 30-year time period. So Florida Statutes Chapter 190 provides specific criteria that are to be reviewed in order for the boards to take action on the Community Development District petition. Staff believes that the petitioner has met all six criteria and is consistent with the Florida statutes. With that, staff is recommending a motion to adopt an ordinance to create the Forest Oaks Community Development District, and this would require just one reading for adoption of this ordinance. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions or comments at this time? Okay, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. If there are no public other comments, I'd like to make...
Cards, right.
No, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance for the Forest Oaks Community Development District.
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Turner, can I take a vote with one Commissioner out of the room?
I think we should probably, yeah, let's grab Commissioner Woodward.
Yeah, if we could, just to be sure. And I know she's heard all the discussions. While we're waiting for that, if staff could tell me, is this something that we'll be coming back to review after a while? This is just the initiation of this?
So this item would be...
This is for the creation of this?
This would be to, would create the item, so it's just a one-time review for the ordinance. And it's completely the legislative discretion of the board whether to move forward or not.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I think we're ready now to take a vote. I know that Commissioner Woodward has been present during the discussions and the presentation, so we're going to take the vote at this time. You have the first and the second. Very good. All those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And moving right along to 4C2, which is public civic sites, housing opportunity presentation.
Mayor, if...
And do we have any, we have many cards on this, by the way, just to know?
We have five cards.
We have five cards on this, yes.
Mayor, if we may ask for a five-minute break so that our staff...
Yes, I know you had asked me that before. Yes, Commissioner Bernard.
You know, since, I know the other item, we need quorum, and I have a flight, so I just, I don't know if this item is going to be contentious and long, so...
We have a quorum.
No, I'm saying to vote on item 4C3. Just want to make sure.
We'll be all right. I mean, I don't understand what you want to do.
What time are you planning on leaving?
Noon.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Oh, noon, and it is...
10:40.
I mean, I think we should be okay, right? I mean, this item...
No, I'll tell you what.
This item is direction, so...
Let's do this. If it's less stressful, why don't we go ahead and reorder the agenda so that we can do... If it's less stressful, why don't we go ahead and reorder the agenda so that we can do four C3 before four C2? And do we need the staff here for that, or do we need the staff for four C2?
I, oh, I was just going to say that I believe the, the presentation that is about to be given is informative and will help with the decision on the subsequent item four C3. So it would probably be best to keep it in order.
Okay. Is that okay, Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
It's okay? Don't worry, we'll talk fast. Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break. Oh my God, my hair looks terrible. Five-minute break, and we'll reorder the staff.
If I didn't know that, I could have waited.
And we let the record reflect that Commissioner Greg Weiss is here in person after doing his due diligence with the canvassing board. So we are going to move forward with 4C2 with a staff presentation.
Yes, this item is really seeking for board direction and I'll be very brief and then I'll turn it over to our partners zoning from the zoning division as well as facilities, development operations. And we also have the Department of Housing Economic Development representative here as well. So it is a joint presentation. Again, this is follow-up on the board's direction back in January 2022 for staff to explore various options for cash out option. And it's related to the Whitworth project, Phase 1, and the Ag Reserve PUD. But again, this is a recap of the previous board direction, explore housing opportunities in civic, on civic sites should the county or the board not, should the site not be needed for civic or government uses. So again, in the discussion, we will be presenting to the board what the current evaluation process is, the density provisions, and the calculation of PUD density, anticipative workflow, and other options such as the cash out option. And where staff is seeking BCC direction for policy changes, for other opportunities to use the civic sites. With that, planning will turn this over to the zoning director, Lisa Amara.
Very good. You're recognized.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the direction from 2022 from the board to staff came about when the Whitworth PUD was before the board for a cash out of the civic pod. And the direction from the board, and it was initiated by Commissioner McKinley, was to look at opportunities for workforce housing instead of cash out or other uses for the civic pods, perhaps private civic, perhaps using the cash out funds for down payment assistance or utility connections. Initially, we thought this would require ULDC change, but at this point, we're confident it does not. However, it does need some board decision-making because of what has occurred since 2022.
I'm going to interrupt you right now. So what does the ordinance, what does the law, our county ordinance state today with regard to what occurs at these civic sites? Can we go back to that past?
We, oh, somebody's moving.
Okay, very good. Go ahead. No, 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 the first one that was up.
Sorry. I'm pressing the wrong button. We have Eric to talk in detail about that as part of the presentation, if you'd like me to go quickly through.
What I want to know is this, what's the law today with regard to what occurs at these civic sites that are?
Right now.
Right.
Right now, the rule is when a property owner comes through to do a planned unit development, they are required to provide 2% public civic by our codes.
2% for public civic?
Correct.
Okay. And continue, please.
And once it, once the zoning division processes an application before you for that 2% civic, that staff report will have an analysis and conditions of approval that allow a cash out mechanism that's coordinated by Eric McClellan's office with facilities.
So at that time, we determined, or the county determined, that that 2% for public civic would be a cash out.
He provides the option for a cash out in the zoning approval when we bring it to you, and then subsequently, I will turn it over to Eric to expand upon what happens after the zoning development order is approved.
Okay, I just want to know what the law is today. So the law is today, we don't have any law. You could either do a cash out, or you could do whatever, whatever we determine on a parcel by parcel basis. That's what I'm, I'm looking for the, where are we starting from?
Good morning, Mayor Eric. Eric McClellan, Facilities Development Operations, Strategic Planning Division. To recap what Lisa said, she's correct, the 2% obligation for a civic contribution applies to planned developments and traditional developments. 75 acres and larger.
75 acres and larger.
Correct. So that, that is a stipulation. I will cover this in detail in my presentation, if you would like to have a presentation.
What is the starting point here? What is the law?
That's the, that's the starting point.
The starting point is that 75 acres or more, 2% has to be given to the public.
Correct.
All right. Is there any, is there any indication? Is there any indication in our ordinance that states what that requirement for that civic, what is a civic site? I'm looking for some direction here.
Sure, it is land dedicated for public purposes. It could be a public purpose. Public facility.
And under the definition of public purpose, we have already determined what a public purpose is. Could somebody state for me what is a public person, purpose, since this has been going on since early 2020s? What, what has been determined to be a public purpose?
Yes.
Could I have Mr. Attorney do this? Go ahead.
I can read right from the ULDC. It says, "Public civic parcels shall consist of civic uses and other typical uses provided by governmental agencies, which are required to provide services to meet concurrency requirements such as, but not limited to, regional parks, water treatment facilities, and fire stations, and services required to mitigate other impacts of the development to service providers, such as, but not limited to, public schools, libraries, or other civic uses."
That's exactly what I was looking for. I, and it's, it's part of the ULDC. So we have an ordinance that defines what a civic purpose is. So starting from there, go right ahead. I just feel better knowing where we're starting from, and the hazard definitions in there. So, very good. Now, I'm, I'm ready. I apologize for interrupting you, but I wanted to get that out at the very beginning. Go ahead, Ms. Amara.
Okay, picking back up, this slide was covered, and PUDs are a popular development option in the county. They allow the clustering of development to create common areas for recreation, civic, even commercial pods, shared buffers, shared access, and such. So this slide shows the approved PUDs in the county in orange, and there's over 300 in unincorporated counties. As you could tell in this slide, the bulk of the PUDs are in District, pretty much the southern part of the county. This was a development style that became popular in the early 70s. So the development area that was predating the early 70s is kind of shown in white on that graphic inside the urban suburban tier. And what we've seen over the past several years, since 2022, is that we're seeing more requests for PUDs outside the urban suburban tier. So what you could see on that graphic is Lake Haven, which is out next to Arden and near the 20 Mile Bend, and you can see Vidura, which is the item on the agenda after this one, and the Trotting Center. So since 2022, we have seen more PUDs coming in requesting an increase in density to accommodate this type of development. And also, in the Ag Reserve, this is the most popular form of development because it's the one that gets one unit per acre. And also, since 2022, we've established the essential housing future land use designation that allows additional density as well with private requests. So how density works with PUDs is the property owner comes in to develop the land area, and he clusters the density onto the residential pods, leaving no density on the recreation pods, the commercial pods, the civic pods. So any action to add workforce housing to the civic pods requires a legislative decision by the board through the future land use amendment process to establish density on those sites. And as will be discussed later in the presentation, there is no future land use designation outside the urban suburban tier and the ex-urban and rural tiers that accommodate additional density at this time. Neither do the TDR and affordable and workforce housing programs apply outside the tier. So again, the 2% over 75 acres, the board also has the option with multiple use plan developments, those are typically the non-residential plan developments, the board can assign a civic requirement to those as well. And as I mentioned earlier, that's all wrapped up in the staff report at the zoning level. And then, once the development order is approved, it goes over to facilities to take it from there. So I will now turn it over to Eric.
Thank you again, Lisa. Again, good morning, mayor and commissioners, both present and virtually. Eric McClellan, Director FDO Strategic Planning Division. Also in attendance with us today, representing FDO, we have Issami Ayala Kalazo, the Department Director and Assistant County Administrator, as well as Purvi Bogaida, who is the Director of our Property and Real Estate Management Division, commonly called PRIM. So to start this portion of the staff presentation, I thought it might be helpful to walk through some of the very high-level and specific regulatory authority for public civic sites. And since we most often associate those sites with our residential projects, even though the sites come to support our non-residential public facilities, this will demonstrate why there is no conflict. Specifically, Policy 2.2.1-M of the Future Land Use Element of the Comprehensive Plan authorizes limited non-residential uses in residential future land use designations. Government administration, law enforcement substations, fire protection, libraries, and civic centers are some of the expressly stated land uses. Policy 2.2.8-A of that same element allows institutional and public facility uses to be cited in all future land use designations, with some exceptions and subject to compliance with all applicable policies and codes. Together, these policies afford the citing flexibility that is necessary to position those government facilities that are under FDO's responsibility in their respective service area. Policy 4.4-C of the Future Land Use Element requires plan developments be governed by a preliminary development plan, which is also known as a master plan. This plan depicts the graphic representation of the location and distribution of land uses, public facilities, and density and intensity across the entire development. All of that then becomes implemented in the Unified Land Development Code, or ULDC, which requires 2% of the gross acreage of a PUD be established as a public civic site or pod for conveyance to the county unless less than one and one-half acre were to be the result. This requirement has been in place since 1973 and refined over the years. I've said many times over the years that this has been a landmark regulation for county facilities, as we simply could not keep pace with the private sector in assembling, negotiating, and acquiring lands to fulfill our public facility needs and level of service standards without this approach and very effective tool in place. The ULDC does allow public civic pod to be designated for an alternative purpose in the event the obligation is met by the cash equivalent to the land, which we commonly call a cash out, an off-site dedication of land, or other responsive substitute, all of which require BCC approval in order to execute that alternative land use designation. This slide shows the ULDC contemplates a public civic site being used, either in whole or in part, for workforce and/or affordable housing. And this is effectively the basis why no ULDC revision would be necessary to implement direction.
Hold on just one second. Let me ask you. Just go back to that. And I'm looking at the attorney as well. They have been able to take, and this is part of our code, a developer has been able to take that civic pod, which is 2% of 75 acres or more, and use it, swap it for, or designate another area that would be, that would be part of his obligation.
That is correct, and I will actually allude to an example of that in the future.
I'm sorry, I can't, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, sir. I didn't, hold on. Did you want to say something? Okay. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead. Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
So the opportunity to provide an off-site location in lieu of an onsite is an option, and I will give you an example of that later.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I just want to be sure that that has been part of the code, and it's been used rather successfully for the last number of years. Okay. And is that, I know I have a hand. Sir? Oh, Commissioner Baxter wants? Very good. Okay. That's why you were raising your hand. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
I want to, so we're going to consider limits to how.
I didn't, I didn't quite hear that. I wonder if you could repeat it again.
If we're going to consider an off-site civic, in lieu of, are limitations to where to be placed?
May I suggest, if you could text this, and we could have somebody from staff read it to us. Is that coming through? Is the text coming through or not?
Our question was, are there limitations to where off-site civic sites can be placed?
Could you repeat that again? Are there limitations to off-site?
Where they can be placed.
Where they can be placed. Sir?
The response to that is there is not established criteria or limitations in regulations. It would always be some form of agreement or exchange that would come before the Board of County Commissioners for approval. So an applicant would make the proposal. This board would be the one that has jurisdiction and discretion in acting upon that application.
Very good. Commissioner Baxter, did you hear the answer? And if you could text it to.
Are you able to hear?
Did you hear the answer, Commissioner?
For the record on this particular.
Okay, we're gonna.
We have so many people in there to amaze me. I am not in favor of to buy out civic site in urban suburban tier.
Okay. Everybody hear that for the record? Very good. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Baxter. And if you have, it's always easier for us to, to read your text. So feel free to text us through staff, and we will have it read into the record and answer any questions you may have. Okay, Commissioner Baxter?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. So to pick up where we left off, the ULDC is the vehicle to secure civic sites, but at the same time, we do operate by established policy in enforcing and implementing code provisions. As you can see noted on this slide, there is countywide policy and procedure memoranda, or PPM-L-023, which addresses all things real estate, civic sites included. This includes consideration of existing and projected future needs for county departments and constitutional officers, participating in the regulatory review process of applications generating a public civic obligation, determining if dedication, exchange, or cash out is most optimal, and preparing the appropriate conditions of approval. To date, housing has not been a use considered or directed for civic sites. From experience, I will tell you that the ultimate assignment of a use or uses to a public civic site requires a combination of institutional knowledge, familiarity with growth plans, and citing considerations, outreach and coordination with departments and agencies, and of course, and at times, strong influence by administration and our elected officials.
However, sir, these are the, on that slide, those are exactly the details that your office needs, is required to review when planning what to do with those civic sites that have come before you. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I want to make sure we hold on to that. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I did want to mention, this can also include use by private civic or non-governmental entities when it's not in conflict with other plans or regulations. And of course, that too is a, ultimately a decision of the Board of County Commissioners. The same policy guides and directs the use of cash out proceeds. As you can see, the intent is to invest these funds local to the service area from which they are derived. This might be a facility rendering service at a local, district, regional, or countywide level. The monies are deposited into a fund that is limited to civic site cash outs, and it's applied to land or capital facilities through the Annual Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, or direct through the BCC Agenda Process. So on to some standard practices behind civic sites, and you're probably asking yourself, what is the magic to 1.5 acres? In 1973, the 2% requirement applied to planned developments of more than 100 acres. That translated to sites of two acres or more, but over time, projects of that size became less frequent. As a result, in 1992, that changed to a blanket 2% with the potential of a site being designated public for conveyance to the county, or private for uses deemed desirable by the developer or HOA. In 2011, we established the 2% as a public civic obligation when that yields one and one-half acre, because from experience, we know that there is no facilities FDO delivers that are feasible on anything less, taking into account building footprint, parking, setbacks, landscaping, stormwater management, and so on. That effectively makes 75 acres the threshold project size for generating a public civic obligation. There are other practical considerations that have informed and influenced the civic obligation and apply to our entire real estate program. With ownership comes maintenance responsibility and the assumption of liability and risk. We're also constantly mindful of the tax roll implications that come with government ownership of land assets. Public civic obligations, as you heard earlier, apply to PUDs, but can also apply to MUPDs, PIPDs, and others, although these are less common. This is also the case for traditional developments, or TTDs, which are very far and few between. Amendments, or DOAs, can also have the effect of generating a public civic obligation. We look to consolidate or co-locate civic rather than fragmenting the obligation into pieces. Obviously, larger parcels are more conducive to site design and accommodating varied programming compared to multiple small sites. All of this together has yielded the county public civic sites that range in size from our 1.5 acre minimum to as large as 43.69 acres in the case of the Canyon Holding in West Boynton Beach. That was a land bank or an off-site dedication created in partnership with GL Homes as an alternative to numerous small sites scattered throughout the agricultural reserve. Also, as previously mentioned, we have standard form conditions of approval that are applied and tailored to each application so that sites are conveyed in a time, form, and manner that aligns with county needs and assurance of future development potential. This includes language allowing requests for cash out as permitted by code, and so as not to preclude due process as a matter of public policy. Now that you two are subject matter experts on all things public civic sites, regulations, policies, and procedures, how about providing some actual examples? Because we do not announce their presence with a billboard or other signage. The board will likely recall the Lake Haven PUD on State Road 80 in District 6, where we anticipate the conveyance of an 8.92 acre site that is slated for a future fire station and library. Fire rescue station 49 is currently under construction in West Boynton Beach on a public civic site. Fire station number 22 in West Lake was constructed on land conveyed to fulfill a public civic obligation of that development order. Land for a future district park remains held in Arden, also on State Road 80 in District 6. The PBSO District 1 Substation and Marine Unit Joint Facility that is now under construction on Jog Road in District 2 was obligated in 2002 and held in ownership since 2007. We hold 9.47 acres of the Melrose Community on State Road 7 in District 5 that has no future commitment at this time. And with all of the other applications that are either recently approved or still pending, there are other obligations, one of which we will consider as the immediate item following this, this current item. And then last for me is some financial details for approved cash outs. As you can see, this practice commenced in 1995, and approvals have been granted to 48 requests. Total revenue generation has been approximately $16 million, and we have a retained balance of just over $3.5 million remaining at present. Next are some examples of capital projects funded with cash out proceeds. These includes office facilities supporting countywide functions, local and countywide PBSO facilities, and park improvements. Clearly, this is not a major revenue source for capital improvements, but a financial consideration nonetheless, and need for land is primarily what we hear, both from industry as well as our users. So I'm now going to turn it to Maria, who will continue staff's presentation.
Thank you and good morning. Commissioners, returning to the issue of density. These sites, as was mentioned earlier, do not retain density. So if the board were to want to direct staff to look at these sites for future use for workforce or affordable housing, density would have to be returned to these sites or applied to these sites in some manner. In the urban suburban tier, that is not necessarily an issue. We have land use designations as high as, high residential 12 units per acre. In addition, we have density bonus programs, TDRs, workforce housing density bonuses can be, that can be used to increase densities to the levels typically associated with workforce and affordable housing projects. However, in the, outside the urban suburban tier, we have some, some limitations. Okay, so, for, it's delayed, delayed reaction, pardon me. So, for example, in the rural and ex-urban tiers, the highest land use designation that is available is one unit per acre and a quarter, and there are no density bonuses, no TDRs or workforce housing density bonuses permitted in those tiers. Same in the Ag Reserve, there are no density bonuses available, and in the Ag Reserve, although there is an essential housing land use designation that allows up to eight units per acre, that has a preserve requirement associated with it, which can be essentially very limiting for such small sites as we see with the civic dedications. So in these areas, if the board were to direct that these sites be available for housing, some comprehensive plan changes would be necessary in order to create a mechanism for the higher densities and potentially to address other limitations like the preserve requirements.
We also need to, to revise the ULDC to allow that, since as it states today, that particular project or that particular use is not, is not statutorily designated in the ULDC.
Potentially, there would be changes required as well.
Potentially, yes or no? If we do it for that type of project, do we need to revise the ULDC?
We're initially looking at what would be required in the Comprehensive Plan, which would be policies to create density at higher levels that currently exist.
I don't think I'm asking my question correctly. In the ULDC, it does not provide for the use of this civic site for that project that you're talking about, which is housing. Is, are we, Maria?
Eric mentioned.
We're on the same page. So do, will we need to, will we need to change the ULDC ordinance in order to do that?
As Eric mentioned a little bit earlier, there is already a provision in the ULDC that generally allows for the use of the civic sites for housing.
Where is that? Now, let me see. Generally allows, it's, stir attorney? Sorry, but this is, this is an issue of law. We have an ordinance. And is there, is there a, is there allocation there for housing in the civic pod? Is that allowed?
Yes, under that Option 6, relocation of units to civic tracts, residential units may be permitted in a civic pod subject to PRIM approval.
Okay, so we're, so we're not really deciding that. It's already part of our code.
What I think the issue is that there's certain tiers where this wouldn't be permissible, and so the Comprehensive Plan would have to be amended if we were going down that path.
Because we do not have sufficient density in those areas.
Okay, so to make it specific, on the ULDC Option 6, which is cited here, and that's page, I can't, I can't read that. What page is that, so I can refer to it? 14? Is that 14?
13.
I can see that far. Is that 13? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, on page 13, it says that we can put housing on these civic pods. Okay, thank you. Go right ahead, Ms. Bell.
Okay, so in addition to housing, we do want to point out that we have, we are seeing increased requests recently for the possibility of using these public civic sites for private civic uses, for example, daycare centers, places of worship, that kind of thing. In the rural and ex-urban tier, this might be perhaps a good option because of the issue with not having sufficient density available in those areas for what would typically, typically be workforce and affordable housing densities. And this would be something that would not require a Comprehensive Plan amendment. It's something that could be done for a particular project through reassignment of the. something that could be done for a particular project through reassignment of the site from public to private civic through the zoning process. If the Board did want to have staff consider these public civic sites for housing, we would envision a process such as is outlined here. So, as happens today, sites would first be considered for governmental services. If a site is not retained for governmental service, then Housing and Economic Development Department, as well as the Planning, Zoning, and Building Department, would evaluate the site for housing suitability. If it were suitable, then the site could be offered perhaps through an RFP process, and a comprehensive plan amendment would happen, would take place to consider what level of density would be placed upon that site. If the site is not considered suitable for housing, then the site would be considered for cash out or for a private civic use. So, to wrap up, the direction that we're seeking today is, does the Board want to continue on a case-by-case basis with these sites, and where, what sort of options the Board would like to continue to see for these sites? So, for example, retaining civic sites for future governmental facilities. Sometimes that's a concern because of the issues that Eric mentioned with regard to liability and maintenance, but there may be instances where that makes sense. Or potentially allow public civic sites to be reassigned to private civic sites, as we had mentioned. Or continue to allow cash outs of the public civic sites, but potentially redirect some of those funds to assist with housing. For example, providing affordable housing builders with funds for, to cover utility hookup costs, or applying these funds toward down payment assistance for purchasers of affordable housing. And then finally, potentially, sites that are suitable for housing, if the Board wanted to direct that, then we would be asking whether that would be exclusively in the urban suburban tier, or whether that would be something you would want to entertain outside the urban suburban tier, in the ex-urban and rural, as well as the agricultural reserve tiers, recognizing that comprehensive plan policies and potentially some Unified Land Development Code changes would be necessary to allow that to happen.
Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. On that one, you said maintain a case-by-case approach. So, right now, because some of these are even less than two acres, right, or are right next to, very close to another civic pod that happened previously, how do you determine now on a case-by-case basis, is maybe a question for PRIM, on, do we have a need for it? Is it, is the site suitable? Is it the proximity, you know, can you just go over quickly how you decide whether or not it's something that we would need, or would be a good cash out?
I can certainly address that directly. Coordination with our end users is a constant practice. Anytime the opportunity comes along, as we're looking at it through the regulatory process, we'll typically start in asking that question. The opportunities coming along, you know, fire rescue, libraries, other users, would this be something you're interested in? So, that's why I said earlier, you have to have knowledge of overall capital facility plans, you have to have knowledge of citing considerations and decisions. It's a constant coordination effort. I will tell you, we would never recommend disposal of a site if we anticipated or had clearly identified a present or future need for a government entity to occupy a public civic site. That is always going to be our number one priority.
And as far as the dollar value on the cash out, how is that determined?
So, a cash out is initiated by the applicant. We're effectively a conduit of the request to the Board to get it on an agenda. The practice historically has been to look at the sales price, or the purchase price, rather, of the property by that applicant. If it's a fairly current sale, we'll do an average dollar value per acre and apply that or multiply that by the acreage of the civic site. So it's a function of their purchase price. If it were to be a dated acquisition, we would typically ask for a current appraisal, so that we are speaking to market conditions. But ultimately, the dollar value proposed is strictly a function of the applicant.
One follow-up, please?
Sure, go right ahead.
So, with that, even if it's recent, is that dollar amount accounting for the land use change that has occurred? If it's, if it's being built as a planned unit development, or as it's developed, if it went from being a very rural area to now water and sewer and everything's run to that site, is that taken into account?
That's probably a good question on our next item to ask the applicant, how did they arrive at the price? It is not appraisal. Again, if we commission an appraisal, it is at county cost, and that has not been direction we've had from the Board in the past.
Is that not a requirement we can make on the development to do an appraisal?
You're free to make whatever rules and regulations you would wish.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Woodward. I would imagine that for taxpayers' use, I mean, this is money that goes to, this is taxpayers' land, taxpayers' money, that we at least have, I mean, at the very least, we should have an appraisal of the property, so that we know that, that value of that land is, been arrived at by a fair and equitable market method of appraisal. So, I would definitely go along with what Commissioner Woodward stated on that. Yes, we have a question here? Sir? Ma'am? Go ahead.
Sorry, it was a comment from Commissioner Baxter texting.
Very good.
So I just wanted to make sure her comment was reflected.
Very good.
She wanted to state that she was not in favor of the ability to buy out civic sites with the amount of people moving to Palm Beach County. We will need the land.
But we would need the land?
Yes, that's what she stated.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Baxter. All right, Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you. I think, you know, probably starting with the more, the simpler question, as it relates to civic sites in the rural and ex-urban tier, I would continue to support that we don't, or don't just automatically allow them to become housing. I think specifically in the ag reserve, we've got the essential housing element that we, we put in place for specific areas within the ag reserve that we felt were appropriate. So at this time, I would not be supporting any change to that. As it relates to the rest of the areas in the rural tier, also, again, just not certain that I want to blanketly just say, let's go put in higher density housing, because it could be, in terms of the plan out there, disruptive to the overall plan for the area. So, that's on the flexibility on the cash out, on the, using the funds. I think, you know, these, to provide, to you, I don't have an issue with using it for supporting folks acquiring, either creating affordable housing, or helping people get into housing. I think it should be, for my, my opinion on it is that they should be agnostic in any which way we can. So if we offer the developer either the utility hookups, or some other way of lowering the cost of building those homes, or whether it comes directly to the buyer as a down payment assistant, either way would be, I think would be okay, provided that the county doesn't have an express need for those funds as well. I think the first question would be, is there a project that is contemplating using these, these funds? And that, if so, obviously, that, I think that would take priority on, you know, although housing is clearly a need, but we also have to, have to run the government. So, I think, I think that answers the, most of the questions you were looking for direction
One thing, if I may?
Yes.
One of the, Commissioner Marino has a question and messaged me. She wanted, she asked, what happens after cash out? So what happens after cash out, if the Board approves cash out? Typically, the developer will go through the administrative zoning process, and zoning alone will work with the applicant to reconfigure the site. Typically, they get larger lots, or they have more recreation, or they could also use it for private civic, but I don't believe that they mostly use it for private civic. She also suggested that new appraisal should always be required for cash outs.
Maybe we could talk that, talk about that issue, since I know Commissioner Baxter had, had a comment on that, and that's one of the issues that you would like us to give you direction on. So I'm asking my, my colleagues, if there's any comments, before we go to cards, we still have cards, are there any comments on the cash out process? Yes, Commissioner Woodward?
I would just say, as I understand it, cash out's only an option after you've determined we don't have a need, right? Or if we do have a need, can they still request cash out?
It is an applicant's right under the code to ask for a cash out regardless. That would, the issue you raised would certainly affect our recommendation on the cash out, but even if we have identified a government facility that we are targeting for a site, an applicant still can make the request to the Board.
But that would be part of the presentation, that you would say, we have a need?
Correct.
For this land?
If we identified a need, the staff recommendation would be for denial of the request.
Okay, and I do agree, I think that there should be an updated appraisal paid for by the developer, and it, accounting for the land use change, that is going to be, it's going to be housing or whatever there, I mean, that's, that value is not the same as the purchase price. And the value that they're going to get from that land, that should be the buyout price.
What is the, and I know I asked this question yesterday of ISME, how much do we have in our budget, or in this allocation of cash out today? We have, we have a budgetary amount that developers have paid. What is that, what is that amount?
So on this slide, Mayor, you'll.
Did you want me to add those numbers up?
No. To date, we've had about $16 million in revenue collected from those civic sites.
From cash out?
Yep.
$16 million.
Yep.
Now, who determines what happens to that $16 million? And what I'm thinking of specifically is when developers go in, people always would like to know who's going to help with the road modification, who's going to help with, we have to pay for FPNL, prepaid FPNL to put in streetlights at that new development. Do we have an ordinance, Mr. Attorney, or you, sir, a requirement that that cash out will be used for that particular area, because, for changes that's paid for by the taxpayers because of that new development there and all the people who have moved in? Who can answer that question?
I can respond.
Okay, very good.
That goes back to the policy and procedure memo that I referenced earlier. That does direct that our objective is to spin those funds in the service area where those funds were generated. Sometimes that can be a community serving facility, it can be a regional serving facility, or it can be a single countywide office.
Can I give you direction?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see the funds of that cash out be sequestered to help the, the folks who are now living in that development, whether it's a PUD, where those funds were generated from. Because the funds were generated from the land that where those folks are living, and I'd like to open this up for discussion. I just think that if the funds were, if that cash out came from an area, let's say in District 2, it should be used for, for government uses to help the taxpayers in District 2, rather than to be sequestered to another area in the county. And I'm opening this up for, for discussion. I'm going to go to you, Mr. Rutter, and then Commissioners Weiss and Woodward, go right ahead.
I just want to add one point. Eric identified the monies, but I call your attention to those total numbers there over almost 30 years. So the $16 million was collected over that 30-year term, as they're sitting on a balance of $3.58 million. That's a lot of money. Also, in facilities rural, that's a good start, is all it is as well. So it's very, very specific to the projects that that might be called upon to respond to in a given area, whether it's a subregion, larger region, et cetera. But I just want to make sure we're clear there.
Thank you, Mr. Rutter. Commissioner Weiss and Woodward, you both had your line on about the same guy? Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. To address, I think, based on my reading of what's, what's currently in the policy, it's exactly what you said. However, you know, if you look at, if you go, for example, the District 2 funding, or the, in, or the civic site in District 2, that provides storage for the Sheriff's Department's water operations, that, that, it's in District 2, but it serves the whole county. When those boats go out on the water, they're out throughout the county. If they do something for aviation, that's serves everybody in the county, every, you know, if they do something at the airport, or whatever they're, they're building, that benefits everybody. So, I think it's, it's, what do they say? It's a, it's a distinction without, whatever, I mean, to the extent that they can use it and there's a direct impact to the local folks, I think that's, that's great. But if not, I don't, I think you need to allow our, our professionals to use the funding, because otherwise, we're just going to have some money potentially sitting around and not being used. And I don't think the taxpayers would, would appreciate just banking money because of a policy we put in place.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add, maybe, we could treat it similar to how we have impact fees, and, or, you know, if it's, if it's a countywide purpose, like you're saying, then, you know, the money could go for that. But if it's for maybe an area park, depending on the use of it, then it should, maybe we had a few zones similar to some, how our impact fees work, but depending on the use of it. If it does serve a countywide purpose, then I think it should be allowed. But if it is for a local library, or park, or something, then maybe we try to stick to a zone. But that's, again, something for, you know, discussion.
I would like to be able to see, using both Commissioner Weiss and Commissioner Woodward's suggestions, that maybe in giving direction to staff on this, that we look towards, on a case-by-case basis, whether it is needed for that particular area. For example, a library, we're talking about Canyon Park, or maybe we need a specific use, and, and we could do it like this, and I'm just suggesting, review first what are the needs of the particular area where the public site is, is located, such as Canyon Park. We probably don't need to store marine objects there, but we may need it for the people who are using Canyon Parks. And then we could use it for, but, but first, we have sort of a tier system. Let's see what, and this is the direction I would suggest, that we use it first for the, for the people where the public site is located, if there is a need for that area first. And then if not, then we can use it for county uses as well. Is that, and again, I'm, this is a suggestion, I think it's, if we could give that to staff. Do we have somebody who wants to say something?
If I may, we received some comments from the computer, from Commissioner Baxter. She's, her statement is civic sites should be, not be used for affordable or workforce housing in the rural tier or the ex-urban tier. And then Commissioner Marino would also like to speak, if we can hear her. If not, we'll read what she said.
Shall we try? Thank you, Commissioner Baxter, we got your message. And can we get Commissioner Marino in? All right, here we go.
Here.
You're recognized.
Okay, what I would like to say is, I agree with the Mayor. This should be on an individual basis when we're considering whether to cash out. Thank you.
Okay, everybody heard that? Very good. Okay. I'm looking at the issues that you need direction on, and would we like to go for any more, staff? Did you, we have a number of them here, and at some point, we're going to need to summarize what we've already discussed. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The only, one of the things that she had asked was whether or not we would allow it for private civic sites, and so.
Let's discuss that.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of like have a discussion on that. And, you know, Eric, how would we do that if we wanted to, let's say there was like a church or a synagogue that needed a site? How can we do that from your perspective?
So that's really a disposal type of issue. As I mentioned earlier, our number one priority will always be government facilities. If we do not identify any immediate or anticipated future, then it would be at the Board's direction. You know, you can direct us to issue an RFP to dispose of the property and gear it towards, you know, the specific use that you would have in mind. And that's really what we typically can. And that's really what we typically consider a private civic use rather than a public civic. Because under the framework of our land development regulations, you do have some civic, which is purely public, you know, a government office, a fire station, a police station. You've then got private civic, daycare, places of worship, whole host of things. So if we do not identify a government use need, we could certainly seek direction from this board on, would you like to dispose of it? And if so, for what purpose?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Weiss?
Yeah, and I think, I like, I liked the, that idea in, in, potentially in some ways. I would like to also contemplate whether we actually dispose of the property, we put it up for a long-term lease, a ground lease, a long-term ground lease on the property. So that way, the county retains the ownership of the land, so at some point in the future, if there was a need by county for something else at that site, you know, obviously, these leases are 50 years, 30 years, 70 years, whatever they are. But at, at some point in the future, the county would have the ability to, to be able to get that land back and use it for, for its, for its own needs.
I very much appreciate the discussion from, initiated by Commissioner Bernard and also by you, Commissioner Weiss, what, how we would hold that property. To me, it's almost a public use to have a place of worship. We definitely have urgent need for places of worship that would be close to communities where they live, for folks to use that as a place of worship, as well as, my goodness, a school. To me, that's a, that's a public use. But I like also Commissioner Weiss's concept of being able to maintain the land or retain, or retain a fee simple of that land and lease it, that we can discuss at the time, depending on what it is.
Correct.
But I definitely agree that that would be a very good direction for this staff. Can we go down to the very last one, and then we'll take a summary of the ones that we've already discussed?
May I interrupt a second?
Absolutely. Go right ahead, Commissioner.
I apologize. I know this is tough for everyone.
No, 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 it's okay. We can hear you. Go ahead and proceed.
Sites. Did you hear what I said?
No, I didn't. Try it again.
We have to be careful with additional infrastructure issues on these sites if they are sold for private civic use.
I understand. And that, and let, if there's no objection to that, I think we need to use that as one of the determining factors when staff looks at using, because certainly a school is going to, you know, engender a lot of traffic and a lot of use of infrastructure, as well as some uses of places of worship. So definitely, I would agree, and if anybody disagrees, speak up. But I think that should be a determining factor to look at the infrastructure before we consider private-public use of that pod. Is that, is that consistent with your, with your comment? Commissioner Marino?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, I would like to, because I'd like to look at the very last one, which is direct an RFP for workforce slash affordable housing. Could we open up the discussion on that at this time by the board? Commissioner Weiss?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think we should do that on a case-by-case basis, based on the location of the site and the feasibility of having that kind of development.
Commissioner Woodward?
I agree. I don't think it's a overall policy change that we should make, but as an option to bring forward a very specific case-by-case. I agree.
Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I agree, it should be a case-by-case, on a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll wait in case anybody else. But my opinion on this is pretty clear, and I have expressed this publicly, that I do not think that we need to have a RFP for workforce or affordable housing on these, on these public, public sites because of the needs of infrastructure. And also because if we place affordable and workforce housing in pods that are outside of planned unit developments, we will not have, we're not creating a community. We are creating a units. We are adding to our number of units that we can be proud of as a county that we've put for workforce and affordable housing. I would be opposed to considering, unless there's an exigent circumstance, and I'd certainly be open, and we can even put that in the direction. But as a policy, well, we need to create communities for workforce and affordable housing, rather than sticking them on two and a half acres and above a group of workforce or affordable housing on a, on a, absolutely on a, on a road, on a court, on a trend, you know, on a corridor, without also providing community. So that's my opinion on this, and I've always had this opinion, that, that we need to create communities, and I've certainly heard a lot today on the, the good people from the church, that that's where we should be creating possibilities of housing clustered around a community, and certainly in an area where they can address their, their, their needs for, for schools, for shopping, rather than at a corner, two and a half acre lot next to a huge PUD. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I support your position, but I know for me, you know, I, I just like the idea of the, on a case-by-case scenario, because, like, I'm thinking about a development that Lennar built, I think Mr. Handler is in the back end in, on Hypoluxo. You know, although you have one development, but outside of it, they created townhomes, and, you know, those residents who were able to purchase those townhomes are workforce housing units. And, you know, in the county, worked with Lennar and Mr. Handler, and, you know, some of our county workers who work in Palm Beach County were able to purchase in those, in that area, and they were, they were able to get a home. And so I just hope that, you know, we can at least keep that case-by-case scenario. So in that way, if there's an opportunity to build that home for a resident, and we do.
Mr. Handler? Come on up here for a second. I want to hear about this. Okay? I appreciate that, Commissioner Bernard, because that is a scenario that I could see would work very well. If it's a large enough area where we can create workforce housing or affordable housing in an area where we're also creating a community, and possibly the workers for, for the contiguous community there would be, would be good, would be good. Would you like to elaborate a little bit on this, Mr. Handler?
I, I think that there's a great deal of organization that the staff is making a recommendation, and it does not impinge upon the flexibility that the board is expressing to staff. So I really think that this is a, a planned, reasoned approach for addressing this very worthy potential asset to the county and to neighborhoods in the future. So I think this is well thought out, well presented, and I think the overlay of what the commissioners have suggested will make for a reasoned plan and proposal. I just don't know if you might want to consider, when staff comes back, as to maybe a timeline for the exchange of information, so that it's meaningful to development applications, as to when these determinations have to be made, by when information has to be gathered and presented, so that the board can make its election. Thank you.
So in other words, the developer would come forward with that timeline to staff, knowing that his development would include housing for, for, for workforce or affordable housing for that development at the same time that the developer is coming forward with his application? Is that what you refer to?
Oh, I was, I was thinking, I'm sorry. I was thinking that staff would make as part of its presentation to the commission, a timeline in which the, in which these elections have to be made and evidence presented to the board by which to make the decision. Because otherwise, it may impinge upon the development application process.
So in other words, that would be part of the application process, would be also the development of workforce housing, for example, at that particular application? Is that?
No, I'm sorry. I really mean to say that staff's recommendation might want to include a timeline of making the election-
Okay.
...and presenting evidence by which the board can make sure that it's properly staged in the development process, so you have all the information on a timely basis, rather than it coming at the end of the development process and, and making final development approval drift for a long period of time.
Very good. Mr. Rutter? Thank you, Mr. Handler, I appreciate it.
Just following up on Mr. Handler's comments, but more notably, Commissioner Bernard's words. The project he's referring to and many others was the required workforce housing per our program, and it was able to be integrated throughout the community and provided, it serves as a great asset. I think that illustrates as well the uniqueness of any given site in any given location. But I don't want to confuse that point with this piece here, which is the disposition, potential disposition of the civic sites, where we would take on, and this board would direct us how to do it, whether it was something that we would lead, whether we put the property out there, and I've heard board discussion as well about private civic uses. So that's, Mr. Handler was speaking to, I think the point is how to address the property, not the end use, because the board, we would come back to the board eventually for that point. The board would just say through the development process to retain the property, to not entertain a buyout on it. And that would be with a recommendation from facilities that the property is worthy of retaining, having made it past the first step of not needing it for those government uses, but this next layer of potential uses.
Did you want to, go ahead, Commissioner Bernard?
Just want to make sure, as the project is coming in front of us for planning, would we be able to, as a board, potentially weigh in at that, you know, at the time that they're presenting to us, if the board would also consider it at that time? Are we able to just?
Ms. Mara?
Absolutely. I mean, I think that's one thing that's, that's been missing so far from this conversation. And I think what Mr. Henry Handler is implying is that Vedura, which is in the item-
Right.
...after this one, was approved by this board in February for a comp plan change, comp plan amendment, rezoning, all of that. And it appears that Mr. Handler is suggesting that we do that analysis on the civic needs when we present that package to you with the plan amendment, the zoning application for new PUDs. And definitely, we could expand our staff analysis and get that decision before the board when the public is here. And as part of that decision for new projects, we can completely build that into our process.
That's a good, that's a good recommendation. And I understand what you're saying. Okay. Commissioner Weiss?
I just want to echo my support of what Commissioner Bernard said, and I think it is about flexibility and, and understanding at, at a given time. I understand your point, Mayor. I mean, I, we have seen where plans have come in where, in order to satisfy the workforce housing requirements of the county, where then the potential of carving off a section of the property outside of the community without all the amenities, because of course, once you put them inside the community, they can't afford the HOA fees. They will not be able to do that. And so, but in, in the past, what we, but that has nothing to do with these civic sites. These civic sites typically are, at this point, have only been used for either doing civic or being bought out, and then that land being allocated to the rest of the, the rest of the development without adding additional density, because of course, they only get whatever density that we've approved them for in the first place. So I think it's, I don't want to use the word red herring, because it, it's, it's not, but it is a bit of a divergence from, I think, what, what's in front of us. Because the idea of, you know, in, in District 2, of taking a two and a half acre parcel and putting 12 units an acre, so that, that's, that's almost 30 units, that, that's significant. That's a significant amount of housing. And whether it's a combination of affordable and workforce, or all workforce, or all affordable, or a combination thereof that we can, we can put in place, you know, that's where you want to put it. You want to put it in the urban areas. And so, you know, I think I was very clear about my feeling about the ag reserve and not including them, as well as supporting what Commissioner Baxter said in regarding to the rural areas. But to get too deep into this discussion and, and to set a policy, I think we want to have as much flexibility as, as, because it's not just for, as we're serving on this board. It is to set this up for the future boards that, you know, we're not going to be here for.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I agree where the housing obviously makes more sense to me as well, but this is for a minimum of 75-acre development. How, where, where do we have 75-acre plots in our districts? I mean, if, where are these plots?
Inside the urban suburban tier, the only ones we're going to see is golf course conversions, like Cypress last month or the month before. Outside the urban suburban tier, the ag reserve is rapidly building out, and there's only a handful of, you know, you have to have a minimum of 250 acres to do an ag reserve PUD, and those are dwindling as well. So that's why since 2022, when this topic was first brought up, we've approved three PUDs on the fringe of the urban suburban tier in the rural and ex-urban tier. That's the Vedura, the Trotting, and the Lake Haven View. So, so that's, you know, however, there's, there's old PUDs around inside the urban suburban tier that do have, you know, PUD civics, such as Melrose, that has nine acres. So, but for new ones, it'll be, the pressure would be outside the urban suburban tier. For the inside the urban suburban tier, the pressure will be higher densities, just like the prior item that is looking for five stories, six stories on a three-acre parcel. So that's the change that's occurring right now at the, at the, in the county. You know, we're getting, get higher density on smaller parcels inside the urban suburban tier.
So even with the golf course conversions, though, like the, the one we just had, the golf course is within a community. It's not like it's all kind of, it's a golf course. Where, where did the two-acre parcels go that's, was a previous golf hole?
Well, in Cypress-
It wouldn't be on the road.
...on Military Trail. We have a decent-sized civic pod on the front of Cypress on Military Trail that was just approved.
That one did work, but not all of them may work that way, right? If it's within a community.
Typically, golf courses have access to an 80-foot right-of-way, and there may, you know, I don't think there's been an issue identifying civic pods in golf course conversions to date.
So really, that, I mean, this discussion outside of golf course conversions has to do with the rural and the ag reserve?
For new, more than likely, for new projects coming in, it's going to be the ag reserve and rural and ex-urban, unless we already have a vacant civic pod inside that's, that's already approved.
I would also encourage us not to forget about redevelopment opportunities that may emerge in the future, and the possibility to acquire underutilized properties, aggregate them, and bring in new development. So don't have a crystal ball, don't know if that's going to be realized, but it is a possibility in the future.
Before we, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Bernard to bring your thoughts together on to summarize this issue, but I know we have cards, and I hesitate to, to go too far forward without having the cards read. Commissioner?
Yes.
Woodward, go right ahead.
We have Dagmar, we have five cards. Dagmar Braz, Risa McCarr, Barbara Roth, Melissa Moyrude, and Richard Moyrude.
Feel free to come on up to the podium.
Hi there. I'll try to make this really quick. I appreciate the comments. Commissioner Weiss, totally seeing eye to eye. We need to do this on a case-by-case basis. We are thrilled to death with our new fire station that's being built on Lion's Road in the ag reserve, but also the opportunity for a cash out on the Cypress Creek, which was just previously mentioned. It's four acres, it's the main entrance to the Toll Brother Development. They have asked for a cash, cash out. I believe the county commissioners sort of said yes. I believe the county commissioners sort of said yes, we would support that, but they did have to talk to Prem first to make sure there was no need in the area. If there was a civic site here, it would definitely generate more traffic, which is a concern in the area. So, please, keep it at a site-by-site.
Case-by-case.
Yeah, totally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Braz.
Good morning. Thank you. I agree, case-by-case site, please. I mean, keeping this out of the rural area is super important. We are absorbing a ton of urban sprawl out where we're at. We just absorbed Vedura and the other one. These things are not what we signed up for, and preserving our quality of life as well as others is part of your job, and a diverse lifestyle. Also, I have issue, I have been told by a couple people that they've purchased homes through these affordable housing and sold them the next year for double the cost. I don't feel like there are checks and balances in place to award them further site uses throughout the county, especially on public property. This is earmarked for public use, not for housing. I mean, that's a real burn to the public, I believe, and our monetary giving to the county. You know, we pay taxes on all this stuff, and I don't know, I don't think it's right. So, thank you, and please continue to keep it on a site-by-site.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Braz. You're recognized.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm sorry I missed Commissioner Bernard. Just a personal privilege, please, to thank him for his mention of the Planning Commission. It's very important to me to recognize, and I was pleased to make that motion, a public-private partnership set, and you are to the public good. And the example that we had today is extraordinary in that. Thank you for that. Barbara Roth representing Cobra. Cobra has the great honor of being represented by five of your seven commissioners. So, you know, when I hear Commissioner Weiss in District 2, you know, Commissioner Barnett, District 3, Commissioner Woodward, 4, the mayor, District 5, and my Commissioner Baxter, District 6, agreeing on this, it is very important to us, because we represent communities in all of those districts. I thank you. And we also want to thank our friends and partners, NGL. You will hear us, you know, in the next number of weeks, months, speaking to issues that we have with density and development on Lyons Road. That will continue to be a priority of ours in terms of concerns. However, we have to recognize that GL has brought us so many of the services at the canyons that serve the communities in our area. The fire station, as Dagmar mentioned, so important to us, Station 49. So, we thank them, and we'll continue to point out when the infrastructure and the roads are not keeping up with that density. But thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, Braz. Good morning. You're recognized.
Well, good afternoon. So, Melissa Moyrude, 7713 Park Lane Road, Lake Worth Heritage Farms. You know, I just wanted to make comment that the church that came before this morning, brilliant, absolutely brilliant. You know, the affordable and workforce housing is not just county, Florida, it's through the whole country. Families still in Massachusetts, I go there often, I was just up there listening to NPR. And basically, they're pretty much doing the same thing up in Massachusetts. They're taking industrial areas, they're taking malls that are vacant, they are taking this, building homes, redeveloping in areas where these jobs are needed, where these homes are needed, where public transportation is already there. So, this is the right idea. Going forward, now, listening to your proposal with the civic pods and perhaps in the rural tier, which I live in, and the ag reserve, is not a good idea. Rarely would I be aligned with a developer, but I'm listening to this. The developers already paid for this civic pod, and now you want to get it at appraised value current day for them to pay for it again? You know, that seems like double dipping. I, you know, again, you won't hear me really sticking up for them often, but it's just something that should be brought up. The other thing is, is that if you're going to open this up for private civic use, are they too going to be paying at the current appraised value? So, that's something to think about. And also, for the needs of the community. I'm the community. This development's not built there. I'm their neighbor. You need to listen to me. So, I appreciate our current District 6 Commissioner Sarah Baxter saying that, you know, this should be case-by-case, and definitely not in the rural tier. I appreciate that very much. As far as buyouts are concerned, again, this should be looked at case-by-case, and if the current balance right now is 3.9 million, the next item up for the agenda would certainly add to that. And I have more to say on that further. So, thank you for really going through this thoroughly. I appreciate all your comments, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, hi.
Hi. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to clarify with respect to our workforce housing developments and our for-sale units, that we have a 15 affordability restriction on those units. In order for the current owner to sell, they have to sell to a resident within the eligible AMI. So, that is for up to 15 years, so we do have those on the properties.
Thank you. I think that was an issue brought up by previous speaker, and if she has any issues on it, I'm sure she would be more than happy to discuss it with you.
Thank you.
Sir, you're recognized.
Richard Moore, 7667 Park Lane Road, Heritage Farms, which has absorbed, again, as Lisa said, unacceptable development. The civic pod there does not need to bring more homes. So, in the rural area, do not, do not pursue additional housing. Let the developer buy it out and expand the lots that are there, not reduce anything or add more building. We'll have more to say on the next item. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are no other cards at this time? I am, yes or no? No, okay. I am going to recognize Vice Mayor Marino. Oh, no. That's not her. Somebody pushed her button. Okay.
No, I'm all good. Thank you.
Okay, good. And Commissioner Baxter? Okay, very good. All right. I think it is. Yes.
I didn't have any.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Baxter. Very good. At this point, what I'd like to do is to summarize those points of direction that we have been asked to give to staff at this time. And someone in staff could be the point person. I'll let you designate that person right now, and it could be different persons for different issues. The, what you have wanted us for direction, to give you direction, is whether we should retain civic sites and PUD for future governmental facilities. And I believe that the, that the temper of the commission is for you to review this on a case-by-case basis. And then, moving on to allow for private civic site uses, daycare, places of worship, schools, et cetera, I am going to recognize Commissioner Weiss.
I think the, in regards to that, I think the other point was that they're going to incorporate this into the application process, so it'll all come at one time.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. And that would be for the same thing for the second point of direction. Anytime anybody wishes to chime in, please, this is a workshop. Allow for cash out of public site and alternative use of funds. I believe that what we discussed is this, this would also be allowed on a case-by-case basis, and one of the determining factors would be whether there was a need in that particular area where the money came from for the uses there. Otherwise, it could be used for county uses to, for the benefit of all the people in the county. The next one is to direct an RFP for workforce affordable housing to extend outside of the urban suburban tier. And, you know, I have my personal opinion on not having this, having this done on a, I do think we should do this on a case-by-case basis, but I have a personal, a professional opinion as not in the ag reserve or the rural areas. I'm going to hear from Commissioner Woodward at this time.
Thank you. I would agree. It doesn't seem at this point there is a reason to do it in the rural or the ag reserve. I think with the growth that's happening there, the focus should be on keeping it for government or future civic uses if needed, and then, of course, as you determine if there's already close proximity to another pod, or, you know, you would let us know. But at this point, it doesn't, I agree, it doesn't seem the right place.
Okay. Has that given you sufficient direction?
Yes, just one addition, the valuation of a cash out. I understand it's the collective will of the board, you want to see an appraisal done by the applicant to justify their proposed buyout price?
I think this was brought up by Commissioner Woodward and also by the vice mayor, and I think we pretty much all agree that the best, highest use of that land on a fair market value appraisal at the time that it is given, not at the previous agricultural area or whatever it was used at the previous time, would be the fairest and marketable way to evaluate that land.
And Commissioner Marino would like to speak.
Commissioner Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I do not want to see affordable housing on these cash out sites in the rural areas. We did the density change from nothing to eight units per acre already in the ag reserve tier, and we did that with the belief that these units would be developed near where there is working opportunities, like the Delray Marketplace. I don't think that putting affordable housing on the outer perimeter of the ag reserve tier is something that would be useful, especially because when you put it near where there is workforce needed, there's also transportation available. And we're talking, you know, we always talk about transportation and the buses, women, capacity on the road. You need to keep the affordable housing and workforce housing units closer to where the jobs are.
Vice Mayor, you've just agreed with what we just talked about, so that was a perfect timing on your part, and that is exactly what the direction is to the staff. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, I think that completes that project. Thank you for all the work that you've done, including Issa Me. I know she put a lot of work into this as well. And I appreciate, I appreciate your comprehensive program on this. Thank you. We're ready to move on to the last part, which is 4C 3, civic site cash out of the Vedura Farms PUD. Talk about timing. Do we have any cards on this issue?
We have four cards.
Four cards. Okay. Would the applicant like to come up, please?
Hi.
Good afternoon, sir. You're recognized.
Good afternoon. Let me grab the clicker real quick and we'll click.
Thank you for bringing it.
Good afternoon, Ken Tuma with Urban Design. Lots of clickers. Thank you. Very short presentation, recognized, this discussion that was just had. So, the request in front of you today is for Vedura Farms to request a cash out of a 1.92 acre subject site. As you recall, you approved this site in February of this past year. The cash out amount proposed is $637,859. And let me address Commissioner Woodward's excellent question before. The Pulte closed on this after the approval, therefore, it does have the higher price. And for a frame of reference, when comparing to the project to the south, which when it was sold unentitled to the developer, it's basically 2.3 times that cost. So, that's the reason why we came up with the numbers. So, here's the subject site identified on the screen, South Heritage Farms Road, north of the Trotting Center. The request is to remove that 1.92 acre site along 441 to cash that out. That cash out, again, as said earlier, was the price proposed. What we're doing with that is we are, we are proposing to spread that land out into additional areas. We're making approximately 20% of the lots bigger and the open space just a little bit bigger. We are not, I want to be very, very clear for everyone in the audience, we are not adding any additional units. We are capped by land use on the amount of units that are being proposed on the site. You do have conditions of approval in the development order that allow us to come before you to make this request. We are making the request today, and hopefully, for your consideration, would like to be cashed out. There is another civic site immediately to the south. It's 325 feet immediately to the south, and that is the Trotting Center project. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, recognizing they're running a little long today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tuma. Do we have any questions or comments by members of the board? Commissioner Woodward?
Thank you for the explanation of how you got to the dollar amount. That's satisfactory to me.
Very good. I have a question for you, and it really, I'm sure that we'll have a good answer to that. These are single, 145 single-family dwelling units, and I think we discussed at the planning portion of this, that there will be provided infant care in the, in your, only for the residents, of course, but that'll be in the recreation site or some site designated. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, we committed, we committed at that public hearing to have that provided by the homeowner association.
That'll be by the homeowner? No, I think we discussed that part of it, but that, that would be.
Ultimately, by the homeowner association. Starts with Pulte, yes.
It'll be run by the homeowner, but part of the development is that there is a requirement, that there would be an infant care there in the, in the site, the recreation center. It can be run by the homeowner association, certainly it would be, but it will be part of your development plan. Is that, that's correct, isn't it, Mr. Tuma?
Yes, I mean.
Good. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Very good. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Baxter knows, I'm waiting for her to type in.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm waiting for Commissioner Baxter to type in her comment.
Okay, very good.
And Commissioner Marino is in support.
Okay, very good. Thank you. While we're waiting for the text to come in from Commissioner Baxter, any other questions or comments by members of the board? All right, seeing none.
Mayor?
Yes.
It's so weird to do this, but what are the plans for the land if they do the buyout? Are they going to make the lots larger?
Good, yes. Okay, and it's probably difficult for you to hear. Mr. Tuma, would you just go ahead and respond directly to that?
Sure. Commissioner Marino, we will be, the lots, 29 lots are going to get larger, and there'll be just a little bit more additional open space, too.
Thank you very much.
Very good. And I'm, are we ready for the text by Commissioner Baxter?
Yes. So, she stated that she's in support, as long as there are no additional housing in the lots will increase in size.
Very good.
That's correct.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tuma.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Should we have the cards, sir? Or go ahead and do the cards?
We have four cards. Barbara Roth, Lisa McCarr, Melissa Moyrude, and Richard Moyrude.
All right. Come on up, folks. Ms. Roth, good to see you. I think that baby's getting bigger and bigger. Good afternoon, Ms. Roth.
Good afternoon, yes, thank you. Barbara Roth for Cobra, again. Vedura Farms is just across the border from Cobra, and our friends and neighbors at Heritage Farms are not members of Cobra, but often, we have dialogue on issues, and Cobra does this around the edges of our boundaries. We're 55 square miles, but what affects five of our communities along 441 is directly across 441 and in front of Heritage Farms. Therefore, we were part of those discussions, and we're very grateful to Mr. Tuma and team. And it was the understanding for Heritage Farms and for our five Cobra communities that that property would be available for cash out. And that was the understanding when we lent our support to it. So, I thank you for considering and staying with that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. And Mr. Tuma and your team, thank you for keeping your word to Cobra. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Same thing. I mean, this was the deal when we met with you guys.
You're going to need your name and your.
Oh, Lisa McCarr, Heritage Farms. We support the buyout because. We support the buyout because this will enlarge the lots and make them more like they should be in a rural area. And we hope that you'll support this. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Were there other cards?
Melissa and Richard Moyrud.
All right. Whoever wishes to go first. Good afternoon.
I'll be quick. So Melissa Moyrud, 7713 Park Lane Road, Lake Worth and Heritage Farms. First and foremost, I did want to thank our district commissioner, Sarah Baxter, for supporting this initiative by Vidura and the community of Heritage Farms. I also just wanted to, you know, back up the bus a little bit and talk about how we got here to begin with. In 2019, we were instructed to speak to developers with the possibility of developing within our rural tier community 50 times fold the amount that was allowable. And we were told to work with the developers. We did so. We got the numbers and a better check and balance. You know, we're not thrilled with it, but it is what it is. We've come a long way. We've done a good job working. And so at this point, the developer would like to do the buyout to expand the lots that would be more compatible with the existing community to the west and to the north, which is Heritage Farms. Please support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your involvement. Sir? Good afternoon, you're recognized. State your name.
Richard Moyrud, Heritage Farms, again. As my wife said, you need to remember the history of this. Heritage Farms was equestrian and agricultural, and they developed with R10, one unit and 10 acres. Developer, now two, went to the commission. And the commission entertained 500 units on 10 acres, 50 times the amount. And during the community meeting, the residents were not pleased, and they were told you can either buy the land, fight it, or work with the developer. So we worked with the developer. The numbers came down from 500 to 166 at the Trotters and 145 at the other. That combined number is more than the residents now living in Heritage Farms. So this PUD, this little civic pod, that's fine. That's a cash out. Expand the lots. But we should not have been here in the first place. So I'm very disappointed with any idea of long-term planning and comprehensive plans. Comprehensive plans, which I was told are fluid, which means everything is fluid. So I guess what can you pin down? How can we go forward if everything is fluid, including our state parks? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other cards? Commissioner? All right, seeing none. It's open for commissioners' comments. Commissioner Weiss?
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion on this item, and let me just make sure I get it correct. Motion to approve the Vidura Farms PUD 1.92 acre civic site cash out in the amount of If approved, the funds will be allocated to general government civic account for future appropriation toward general government facilities in the general area.
Do we have a second? By Commissioner Woodward. All those four. Anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously six to zero. And I just want to comment, I want to thank Mr. Tuma and Mr. Handler in doing a great job in promoting this and working with Heritage Farms and the residents, and of course, working with Cobra, who looks out for all of this. I would hope that the general funds is going to be used in the area where Heritage Farms and Vidura Farms are. I'm sure it will be. I want to thank staff for an amazing job of putting together this presentation today. So before we completely adjourn, I'd like to hear from our assistant county attorney, if he has any comments.
I do not have any comments.
Very good. Planning director?
No comments.
And our zoning director?
No comment.
All right. Our executive director?
Just thank you for staff. That was the civic site workshop was a group effort, and I really appreciate the multi-department coordination on that and staff's level of detail on that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Carol. Deputy county administrator?
No comment.
Very good. And our commissioners, since... Well, Commissioner Baxter, do you hear me? If you have any comments as I go through the other commissioners, you're welcome to text them. Vice Mayor Marino, any comments?
No comments. Thank you very much.
All right, and we hope your dad is feeling better, by the way. Commissioner Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. One, I would like to request that the board appoint Commissioner Marino as a substitute for supervisor of elections, link for the upcoming November election canvassing board position.
Is that...
I don't know if we need...
First of all, does Vice Mayor Marino know this?
Yes.
Okay, good. I didn't want to volunteer you. And do we need a vote on this?
I would think so, yeah. It's a motion, so...
As part of your appointments, I would take it as board direction, but yes, going through a vote would help mobilize it.
Okay, well, make it a motion, then.
Okay, and first, we have a second from Commissioner Barnett. All those four, anybody opposed? See that it passes unanimously six to zero.
May I ask a question?
No.
You volunteered. Vice Mayor, go right ahead.
Do we need another alternate?
We do, but that's for a different time.
Okay, thank you.
We need a few alternates.
Thank you for your volunteer. Okay, go right ahead, Commissioner Weiss?
Thank you. Secondly, I want to bring up a topic that, and I'm sure most of your offices have heard about this, but the situation still continuing on from municipal contractors and their lack of fulfilling their contractual obligations. The county causing our projects, a number of them, to be... Seems like they're permanently on hold. You know, we get the updates from engineering that... And I know it's not engineering's fault, they had... They didn't... They're not responsible for this. It's strictly a private construction company that put us in this position. But couple things, you know, we've got these projects now that have been sitting on hold. Last we have heard is that we're now waiting for the surety company to, I guess, contract with somebody to finish these projects off. In the meantime, this has been years going on. These projects are not complete. They're a mess. The folks that have to transit those areas on a regular basis or even on a irregular basis are put at risk. And it's... At what point do we just... Can we do something about it? So a couple things, you know, I'm wondering whether we should be revising how we award these contracts going forward, if there's anything we should be doing differently so we don't end up in this situation. And I know it's not common, but I want to also make sure that the folks that put us in this position never get any opportunity to ever do this again. So if they change their name of their company or whatever, we need to know who these folks are, because this has gone on way too long, and it's unacceptable. And then lastly, I'd like for staff to come back with a recommendation. Should we just be finishing this, take the money out of reserves, finish these projects, and then deal with the surety company? Because this is... I mean, it's years now, years. And people call up, they're frustrated, we're frustrated, and we don't have it. There's never an answer that we can give them when this is going to get done.
Commissioner, may I ask you, do you have a specific company in mind that you're referring to?
The name of the company that put us in this position is a company called Municipal Contractors.
Municipal Contractors. And Mr. Attorney, do we have in our contracts that the county does with private... And we do this on consent agenda every day.
This is mine, but it's 2013.
I'm sorry? Just hold on, hold on, Vice Mayor. County attorney, do we have in our contracts with private, you know, private entities, private companies, do we have clauses that will take care of the situation? Okay, Mr. Rutter. Mr. Rutter, and the question really is, when we contract with a private company, do we not protect the county with regard to these contractors not fulfilling their legal obligations? Mr. Rutter?
The unfortunate answer is the method that we're going through is the protection, to have a bonding company and all that. Do not disagree one bit with Commissioner Weiss's and everybody else's frustrations with it. It is a very difficult answer to have to give. Part of it is balancing protecting the taxpayer dollars with an obligation where we have paid a contractor to perform work, and then working through a bonding company. Here, the points, though, and if you'd allow us to look back, because I think what I'm hearing is what can we do to strengthen not just the bad performing, and I'm not speaking about anyone specifically, but just in general, the bad performing contractor, but what can be done more so on the front end to ensure something? And there are probably others that have a couple ideas. If I may, I'll take that as direction, and let us get back to work up some ideas.
Very good, okay. Commissioner Woodward?
No comments. Just thank you, staff, for all of your hard work on this today.
Commissioner Barnett?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to echo my own frustration. I'm sure, Commissioner Weiss, you may have been referring to as one of the projects, the Sixth Avenue Bridge, possibly. Every time I talk about it, every time I address it here, it seems like there's a new delay after the update we gave last week. I've heard that we're going to possibly miss the opening of Palm Beach State College with regards to the opening of the bridge. But as you said, public safety comes first. We have to make sure that bridge is safe and that the damage to the storm pipe under the road surface is completely fixed before we can open that bridge and hopefully have a very nice ribbon-cutting ceremony and rededication. I wanted to also address, well, you probably already saw on the news yesterday in our community in Green Acres, at a strip mall, one of our plainclothes PBSO deputies was involved in breaking up a potential robbery, ended up getting stabbed. And I received an update from PBSO Colonel, the deputy's in stable, critical but stable condition, is expected to make a recovery, but he may need surgery to heal his injuries. I hope you will all keep this deputy and all of our deputies and first responders in your prayers and thoughts, because they deal with really dangerous situations we never have to see, usually. And it brings me to my next area of concern in my district, a community off of Jog and Forest Hill, you may know as Casa Del Monte. It's a trailer park community with about 657 lots, many families crammed into each of these lots. I had a chance to attend and participate in a food distribution event with Restoration Bridge International and the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. In that community, lines of cars coming to get boxes of corn and watermelon and cucumbers and sweet potatoes, meats, perishable and non-perishable items. We spoke with some actual DCF agents and PBSO officers at a particular lot where there was a family of five living in conditions that I don't think you would see in the worst of the Third World nations. But this community exists right here in Palm Beach County, in my district. There are allegedly numerous, numerous violations of county code in this community, and I'm hoping our staff and the code... What is it? Code compliance now, code compliance, will take a look at Casa Del Monte and work with my office and Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office to see what we can do to help the people who are living in deplorable conditions. There's drugs being pushed on these people, many of whom are immigrants who are being taken advantage of and have no other choice other than to possibly move back home to Guatemala or Honduras or Mexico or South America, to areas where they were escaping from for a better life in America and end up having to live in utter disgusting poverty conditions right here in our backyard. So I expect to hear from someone from code compliance hopefully this week. Would love to start getting in there and see how we can do to help these people. On a much lighter note, I wanted to wish my little sister, Monique, a very happy birthday. And we have the start of football, college football season. Thank God for football. Take our mind away from some of these troubles temporarily. Mayor Sacks, go Hurricanes. Has it got a big game on the Thursday first?
That's right. All about the U, right?
That's right, all about the U.
It's all about the U.
And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I do, I love football. Thank you so much. I want to thank, of course, staff, you do an amazing job just putting up with me sometimes, and I appreciate... I push you, but I think we have the best staff because we have the best county, and there's a lot of challenges. And I thank you all for that. And I want to thank my colleagues also for putting up with me a little bit on these issues. But the beautiful thing is that at the end of the day, we reach a consensus, and that shows you that the seven districts in this big, large geographic county were all moving along in the same direction. And I'd also like to state that with the housing, with 1365 House Bill and the new Supreme Court decision and lands end with the state of Oregon, we have a challenge to find housing for our homeless. And I want to comment that I will be working with county staff under the new idea of Housing First, which is research done out of Norway and Finland. And now this Housing First policy has been approved and confirmed by cities in California, Oregon, the state of Washington. I have to state that the cities that have used this Housing First policy have completely cured the homeless situation in those municipalities and counties. It is also being used in the city of Orlando and the state of Florida. So we're going to be working on this project, and we're going to be going out to the municipalities, working with our mayors to make sure that Palm Beach County will take care of our homeless situation without taxpayer cost, public-private partnership, and that it will be done in a very compassionate but very humane way to take care of the homeless here in Palm Beach County. And with that, go football season, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.